Good morning. Today is Wednesday, June the 2nd. Incredible.
All right.
2021. Unbelievable. All right, let me start again. Wednesday, June the 2nd, 2021. Notice is hereby given that a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas will be held this date at this time, 9:00 a.m., at the Grimes County Adnix Building, 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. The meeting has been called to order. I would ask that you please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and to the Texas flag. Brother Charles?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. I'm sure that this is a day that you have made, and I will first part of your call is to invite you into this court because this court belongs to you. Thank you for the wisdom. Thank you for the knowledge. Thank you above all, as you say, again, understanding. And we pray, Father, that everything from above will fall afresh in this room. Every problem will be solved according unto your wisdom. Every problem. Bless each commissioner. Bless, Father, the judge. Bless the attorneys. Bless the clerk. Bless everyone that is upon him. And we give you honor and we give you glory. Thank you that you have given us the greatest county in the U.S., and we thank you for that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Would you be seated, please? We now go to public comments. This is the time in which citizens, or commissioners, or judges, or whoever would care to address the court. We would ask that you limit your comments to two minutes if possible. And I only have one submission this morning. It's Mr. Carl Dry. He would like to speak on road safety funds. He would like, he also has, he would like to introduce a petition. Carl, are you okay to make it up to the podium?
It may take me a while, but I'll get there.
We won't start your time until you get there and get settled. Is that fair enough?
That sounds fair to me.
All right, sir.
If I sound a little grabby, forgive me.
It's all right.
I appreciate this opportunity to present a petition to you concerning the safety of two of our county roads. Those roads being County Road 304 and over half of County Road 302. Both of these roads are heavily traveled due to an increase in population in the area and construction of State Highway 249, which will connect County Road 304 when completed. This will increase the traffic numbers on County Road 304 considerably when completed. Both of these roads are narrow and have many very sharp 90-degree curves, as well as hills. Make them driving a white knuckle pair at any time. I'm asking you to find the funds to put striping on these roads for the sake of safety. At night, and particularly on rainy nights, it is almost impossible to see the roads when there is oncoming traffic. I invite all of you to take a nighttime drive down these roads for a better understanding of the problem. Better still, a rainy nighttime drive. I personally have had to come to a stop off the pavement because of oncoming vehicle. Apparently could not see where they were in relation to the shoulder. And so consequently, they were taking a part of my side of the road, forcing me off the road. I have been very fortunate inasmuch as it seems that a lot of our travelers are just this, that's like, the speed limit signs read 35, and some seem to read that as 53. But that's another story. My petition is for the safety of all and has been signed by 68 fellow citizens who travel these roads daily and agree with me that something needs to be done before a life is lost simply because of visibility. Again, I ask you to please find the funds to strike these roads for safety. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to leave a copy, or can you give a copy of your petition for the county clerk?
I shall do that.
Thank you so much.
I can have one for each of y'all.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, sir. I have no other comments she's performed. Commissioners?
I have two.
Okay. Commissioner Dobianski?
Sunday, St. Mirr's Catholic Church is having a blood drive from 8:00 to 1:00 o'clock. We will be serving breakfast for those who donate blood. And tomorrow is the Anderson food distribution at the Food Pantry here in Anderson.
Commissioners, any other? I have one announcement that I'd like to make, or just a reminder. We are close to, close enough to the Gulf Coast that we all need to be reminded that hurricane season opened yesterday. And I guess we've been in, seems like the monsoon season for the last six or eight weeks. So if we were to get a tropical storm anytime in the near future, we could be in real trouble as far as ground saturation, saturation and flooding and things of that sort. There's no, no mad dash to go to the stores and get batteries and get your one or two or three week food supply, but I would encourage you to do a little pre-planning. Make sure you know what you're going to do in the event of a hurricane. Now's the time to prepare because we know it's going to happen. We just don't know when it's going to happen. So while stocks are available and prices aren't too outrageous, other than buying plywood, now would be the time to probably stock up on your hurricane preparedness. We're going to do a review of county facilities and generators and things of that sort in the next couple of weeks to make sure everything fires up. We've got batteries and propane tanks and all of that business taken care of. So, citizens, be aware, hurricane season has started. They're looking for 12 to 16 named storms. Not all of them will come up to Anderson, or they shouldn't, but even if one does, I'd like you to be prepared. I have no further comments. Commissioners, with that, we'll then move on to consent agenda items number three and number four. Number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, consider and take action to approve payroll. I've reviewed, have no questions. Do you all have any questions?
No, I don't.
Is there a motion?
I made the motion that we approve consent agenda items three and four.
Second. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski on consent agenda items number three and number four. All in favor, is there further discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. That motion carries. We go to Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Al Peeler. Mr. Peeler is off ill last week and this week. We expect him back next Monday hopefully, but I think Commissioner Cox, you're prepared to give the building committee update and whatever you can?
Yes, sir. We've had a conference call yesterday with the, the parties involved with the new building, and we've had a little bit of rain, so that's kind of slowed things up outside. The, the big obstacle now is getting the HVAC online and running so that we can regulate, or they can regulate the temperature in the building and start some of the woodwork and ceiling tiles and things that are affected by environment. So, it was fairly short. That was their main goal, is in the next few days to get that HVAC online. And I know he mentioned he would be meeting with the carpenter yesterday so they could start lining out their supplies and getting ready. So that's kind of the, the latest. We've got a lot of rain. We need some dry weather.
Amen. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any comments, Commissioners? Mr. Mallett? Nope. Okay. With that, then, we'll go to agenda item number six, Grimes County Human Resources Director, Kalida Coleman. Kalida Coleman. Review, consider and take action on Grimes County, counties, Texas County and District Retirement System, TCSRS Plan Assessment for the Plan Year 2022. That is our attachment number six.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great. We are at agenda item number six. If you could give us a review of what we need to discuss in regards to the retirement system.
So you had an attachment, which was our plan assessment that TAC sent us out. There is going to be an increase. What I'm giving to you now is what our plan was for last year. And then I did an alternate plan for Commissioners' Court to review.
Thank you.
So basically, everything is staying the same on our plan. We're still doing the 7% at the 190 match. If you notice down at the bottom below where it talks about contribution rate, that's where the biggest rate increases.
Which page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, the, the plan year 2022, first page.
Okay. That's got the black stripe at the top. Okay.
Go to page two. So last year, our rate plan, our total contribution rate plan with the retirement rate plan and the group term life was 8.65. This year, they're projecting, or they're saying that our retirement rate plan is going to go from 8.2, 8.21 to 10.16. And the group term life is actually going down just a little bit to 0.42, which is a total contribution rate of 10.58. When I talked to our representative from TAC, he had told me that the reason that the rate is changing is because March of 2021, the TCRS board met and elected to reduce the investment return assumption rate from 8 to 7.5. The investment return assumption rate determines how much benefit funding is expected to come from the investment versus the employer contribution. So basically, our rate is going up to offset the investment return. I spoke with the auditor's office this morning. Using our current salaries as of now, the increase would be 123,005.296.
Is that actually on here, or you just pulled me out?
No, I'm just pulling it out.
Can you repeat that number one more time, please? Thank you.
So basically, we're having an increase of 1.95%.
What's the increase percentage wise?
The percent increase is 1.95. In the 22-year plan assessment, on page four, it shows the difference in the years and whether the rates increased or decreased. TAC does not, or TCRS does not expect that they will go back to the 8%. From my conversations with them, they're probably going to hang around at the 7.5 for a while, which means our rate is not going to decrease again. The only way to get that rate to decrease is if we were to allocate additional funds to be paid towards our contribution rate. I played with some numbers, and even if the county allocated another $100,000 to go in there, it doesn't really change the numbers as much. I provided you with a comparison if we were to make a change to our TCRS plan, which I don't recommend because it's lowering the percentage from 7% to 6% on both employee and employer contribution, and the rate change is not really significant. So I'm asking the court to approve the plan assessment, plan year for 2022 for TCRS retirement.
When do you have to have that approved?
They need it by December. The rate changes goes in January 1. So we are kind of early. I'm just trying to get...
Yeah, but it's also, it's also necessary for our budgeting process.
True. You could all table it till then if you all want, you know, to do some further research. I could even bring in TCRS to do a presentation for you all if you'd like. Our representative said he's willing to do that as well. I did question about maybe a grandfather plan because that was kind of brought up to me. There is not a grandfather plan. Like, we couldn't grandfather our current employees in and start a new plan for new employees. He said if we made any changes, the employees who are available for retirement now really wouldn't be affected. It would be our younger people coming in that the plan would really affect, which is kind of...
Comments, Commissioners?
This is a pretty significant decision. And I don't, it's not due until December. We're fixing to get into the budgeting process. I certainly would hate to rush this decision without considering other aspects.
Like I said, I'm good to have discussion during our budget workshops. Okay? And we will table any action. We'll review this when we get into our budget workshops, but thank you for the information. It's going to be helpful.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Instead of saying grandfather, should we call it an elderly option? Just thinking ahead. We'll now go to agenda item number seven. That's Grimes County Commissioner, precinct floor, Commissioner Cox. Discuss and take action to approve the Grimes County Fairgrounds lease agreement between Grimes County, Texas and the Grimes County Fair Association.
Judge, if you wouldn't mind, there's some people here that would like to participate in the discussion.
Absolutely.
While he's getting them, I want to ask, Cherie, the documents you sent yesterday, were they the same? They just, he just gave you two?
Yes. I just printed a copy and gave it to you. I've stapled together. Is it in front of your binder?
That's it.
Step down. I don't see him out there. Mr. Randy Krieger.
He's in here.
They're different, Cherie.
So, the idea of a new lease agreement for the fairgrounds has come before us. There's been some discussion about the possibilities of that and what that might look like going forward. We have the fairgrounds manager here, Mr. Randy Krieger, and if the fair, the fair association, if y'all would introduce yourselves?
I'm Roddy Floyd, president for this year. Colton McCollough, board member, and Stephanie Brzezinski, she's our treasurer for this year.
So, there's, there's a lot of history with the fair association and the fairgrounds and what's been paid, what hasn't been paid, how much should be paid. And it's a fairly complex issue. And I've just relied on some of the data that the county has in addition to some of the information that's been provided by word of mouth. I think yesterday I should have received a couple of emails, the county's current contract agreement, and then a revision that was done by the fair association and their legal team. Long story short, and I mean, we can get into questions, there's a few items on there that, that the court, I believe, is going to have to probably make a decision on to go forward. And John C. has, the county attorney has reviewed the contract, and if I missed something, would you please help me out there a bit? Some of the major...
Could you distinguish which one is which?
The long one was the one, John C.
The big one?
One of those words.
The other one, let me see what it says here. Their agreement has a number one on the bottom of the page.
Okay.
Our agreement does not, or the one we're using does not. So, in, in these discussions, and looking at the agreement, some of the things that were brought out by the county attorney's office and, and were discussed in our meetings with the fair association was, we needed to specify the actual total number of days that would be utilized by the fair association. If you look in number two, it says 14 day, on their, their copy, it says 14 days for the fair and additional days throughout the year for meetings, tag-ins, miscellaneous fundraisers and the like. It's recommended by the county attorney that those days, the total number of days, be specified. That's one thing we will probably need to address. Their, their agreement calls for a 15-year term. That, that seems a little excessive or a little long. Ours calls for a five-year term with a renewal period. The termination notice, I think, probably could be addressed by, currently it says 90 days with certain conditions. I think I talked with Mr. Floyd, and 180-day notice would be appropriate because if the faces change, or when they change, he would, he had some concerns about if the county or their organization came in, doing it too close to the fair after they had already made arrangements that year. And he said it feels like 180 days would be an appropriate amount of time out if there were an opportunity to cancel it. And I guess the big issue is the rent amount. What, what would the county charge the fair association for the rent? And how would that rent be satisfied? So I've talked to a lot of people and got a lot of input about this. Our current or presented agreement suggests that there be an amount set of rent, and that could be, that could be satisfied either through a payment or labor or projects. Their presented agreement, and they desire zero rent, but have committed to doing projects. One of the issues that they have is they don't know how much, from year to year, they're going to generate to, to pay a specific amount of rent. So those are all, were the big issues with the contracts that we probably, as a court, need to decide. I will weigh in on this a little bit, not trying to... The, the whole purpose is to benefit the youth of Grimes County. And if that's the purpose of their, their organization, as well as the other support organizations that contribute money to kids, by us charging, I don't, exorbitant amount of rent tends to lead to that idea that we're actually taking money out of kids' pockets. And that's what I want to avoid. And the court will need to make a decision if, if that's the direction we need to go. I think one of the ways that they could address that is if we don't charge rent, they could lower their commission on the sale items or do other things to offset the cost and the expense to the kids in Grimes County. I think that's a summary. Correct me if it's not a fair assessment.
That's very fair. We're just here, whatever questions that y'all need for us.
Roddy, I'm sorry, can I get you to come to the podium?
Sorry, sir.
That's all right.
Sorry about my appearance as well. We're in bull swing right now.
That's all right.
We're here to answer any questions y'all have. Of course, the smaller the dollar amount, the more that we can contribute back to the kids in scholarships, as well as less percentages. It's, every dollar amount that we get comes mainly from those percentages from, say, the, the cost of putting it on is quite substantial, and a lot of that is covered by ticket sales, but we still have to have operating costs to get us through the year. So, we have to take that percentage. And unfortunately for the children, it's more than anybody would like to see, which, just like this lease agreement, would be 0% from them. So, that's the goal that we're heading to with this.
Mr. Floyd, did you, maybe you can enlighten us on number nine in your, your contract that talks about the $0 due for the fact what you've done over the years?
Throughout the years, Grimes County Fair Association has not only paid for improvements, I believe in, I'm going to be wrong on the years, 15 years ago almost, we signed on to do 390. No. I'm not good with the numbers, and I'm not going to take up your time doing it, but we've paid almost $579,000 to the county and put that money in the general fund for not only the initial purchase of the property, but also the improvements at that stage when it needed to be improved, which was the parking lot, the barn, paint. I want to say there was, Randy knows more about that than I do.
The one I'm a little puzzled by is the 19,006, 965 per, per annual, since 1992. Is that something that...
That's just an average number.
Okay.
But yes, we were making, we were making payments as long as putting in upgrades. We built a barn out there, the rodeo arena, things of that nature. So that was just an average per year that came out.
Okay, I have that number.
So from, from '92 to present, about $20,000 a year from the fair association in improvements to the facility?
Not just improvements, that's also the monetary money that we put into the general fund that is sometimes called, was our payment, but it was for improvements.
Gotcha.
It was just, y'all put forth the money initially, and we covered the note. It was just, y'all put forth the money initially, and we covered the notes on the back there.
Mr. Foltz, in what the Fair Association has presented, is there a deal breaker anywhere in their language?
I'll come into the podium to talk.
Before you start talking, I'd like to make a correction. The payment that the Fair Association made was not put back into the general fund, it was actually put back into Fund Fifty, I believe, Debt Service.
Debt Service, yes.
Because the county had taken on the debt for the fairgrounds, and they were paying it back with two other organizations.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Foltz?
Yes, let me start by saying that I don't know that there's anybody in the room that is not in favor of the fair. So I think the discussion is about what's the appropriate balance here of what does a tenant pay, or what's a tenant obligated to do, and what does a landlord do? We had a meeting, as I recall, I think Commissioner Nowakowski was there, and Mr. Krieger was there, and it's been maybe two years ago that we met with Billy Fuqua and some other folks who represented, I think, some of the entities that were involved in this payment circumstance.
Right.
And that was the first time, I think, that anybody had explained to me, from their perspective, what had occurred in the past as far as the various groups that were anchor groups in the in the fairgrounds. I have copies of the leases, but I didn't understand the arrangement, and certainly somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is that at some point, there was a circumstance where the folks who had the fairgrounds or wanted that facility were in a circumstance that needed, they needed the county to come on board to be the contributing party to be sure that the finances were taken care of. The county said, "Yeah, we'll do that, but we need the help of you guys. We don't have the funds to do all of this, and we've got this note that's out there, and are you guys willing to commit to that?" And there were, I think, four groups, and somebody can tell me how many there were, but effectively, the county was coming in to help be a problem solver, not the county coming in to say, "We're a bully," or county coming in to say, "You got to pay this," or be a jerk about anything. You know, we can talk about who the county is at any point. Unfortunately, the county today is you, it's you, it's, God forbid, it's me, whatever. So, point is that I don't think there was anybody that I know of that's been a part of the county that has necessarily been against the fair. I think it's been an idea of how do we work this out that both parties are benefit? How is this a symbiotic relationship? Certainly, to provide a benefit for the kids of the county, I think, is an altruistic goal, but Mr. Maynard would tell us, and the auditor would tell us, you got to balance that with, you're taking taxpayer dollars, you're forcing dollars out of people's hands in their ad valorem payments, and now they're paying to something, and I looked at the printout, it's a losing proposition to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so, you're going to have to stare at that thing, and you're also going to have to decide as a fiduciary, but also as a concerned citizen that appreciates what the fair presents for the county or for the kids of the county, where do we need to be on this deal? Where do we need to be on this lease? So when you ask me about a deal breaker, I think Commissioner Cox and he and I have talked about this several times, that I don't know that anything is a deal breaker, and most of this is just policy, and you've got to approach it, you as a court have to approach it from a policy standpoint. What makes the most sense? What can be the appropriate balance? What's beneficial for the fair, but also recognizes that I wasn't elected to be a commissioner of the fair, I was elected to be a commissioner of the county government. And so you have to decide what that mechanism is, or what the appropriate term for the lease is. As Commissioner Cox said, when I originally drafted, and he was talking in terms of our lease and their lease, our lease was my draft of a lease, so there's no lease at this time. And I used the form that I thought everybody'd be familiar with, which was the previous form used over the time where the payments were being made to cover the note. So I started with that basic format and then tried to make changes that I understood. We were trying to attack or go after from both sides, both parties saying, "How do we resolve this issue?" We had a meeting, I don't know if you were at that meeting, but with Mr. Floyd and Mr. Brzezinski and the folks at the fair and in the jury room, I want to say a couple months ago, maybe longer than that now. But I walked away from that meeting thinking that the primary goal was to put in place an arrangement where there would be a rent amount to the fair, and then you could avoid potentially an equal protection claim by any other party, any other group that says, "Look, we're a benefit to the kids of the county, and we don't want to pay rent, just like the fair doesn't have to pay rent." And so how do you get past that, where you avoid a lawsuit, where the county has to pay, where the dollars that the county pays are taxpayer dollars to settle the lawsuit or resolve the lawsuit? I mean, that's the kind of assessment that you all have to do. So I thought, coming out of that meeting, that the goal was, get a lease that says, here's a lease amount that's somewhat related to what other parties pay per day or per weekend or whatever it may be, but gives the fair the ability to use in-kind contributions, improvements to the facilities, to reduce their rent amount. Because I thought that, my understanding from the meeting was, they intended to, and they were saying in the past that they had, made improvements and wanted to know if that could be a reduction to the rent. It seemed like a good idea to me. But of course, there would be the condition that at least the county manager, if not the county fairgrounds manager, as well as the county commissioner, would have the opportunity to say yea or nay to the proposed improvement before it went in.
Right.
Not that these folks would, but, and we always have to consider things, you're gone tomorrow, you're gone tomorrow, these folks are gone tomorrow, we got something else, black and white, that is there and tells the people of tomorrow what to do. Well, if the people of tomorrow said, "Hey, we want to put in a gold toilet, and we want credit for, you know, this year's rent, and we want a carryover," whatever it may be, obviously, you would want to have somebody from the county government that have some ability, some discretion to say, "We're not putting in a gold toilet, we're not..."
Well, we need two, one for the men's and one for the women's.
All that to say, I walked away from that meeting, understanding that that was where we were headed with the lease, and so as I drafted it, that's where I was intending to go, was put in place a rent amount. And I didn't have the number. From my perspective, that was going to be up to Mr. Krieger to tell us what's somewhat rationally related to what another entity would pay for fourteen days, or twenty days, or however many days they needed. And never intended to deny them any use that they need for it, certainly didn't intend to inflate any price to them, but also recognize that when this day came, and you don't, that's why I have to make the decision today, but when this day came, you as fiduciaries, sitting over there, if you heard your auditor in your ear saying, "Look, I'm a member of the community, this could be a political issue, though she's not elected, but I'm looking at the bottom line, and this thing is a losing proposition that's fairgrounded, a losing proposition on the financial end, all day long." County is in the business now of providing an entertainment venue where the county's losing the people's money to the tune of over a hundred thousand dollars a year. You have to decide in that environment, can you say to an entity, "We're not going to charge any more?" And if you do that, does the next entity say to you, "Well, what about us? We provide a similar thing or the same thing." I say all that to say to you, I want to be sure that you see all sides or both sides of it, and recognize, as I started out, I don't think anybody's against the fair, it's just a matter of what works for both sides as best we can, and there's probably going to have to be some give on both sides. I certainly recognize and want to say to you that the fair has always been an anchor of helping make the payment, of making improvements, I think, that are a benefit to the asset that's owned by county government. So I don't think anybody's here to say that the fair hasn't done its part. But I would say, for that comment about, "We've paid all of this, and so we should pay nothing now," if you were to lease an apartment to a tenant, and the tenant, the rent's five hundred dollars a month, and it's for a year, and they pay five hundred dollars a month, and they pay on time, and after it's over, you've got six thousand dollars, but they would then say to you, "Well, since I did such a good job on that six thousand dollars, can I have the lease for nothing for another year?" That thing stands on its bottom, it stands on its pale, it stands on its own bottom, I guess I should say, it should don't stand on its bottom. Point being is that the deal was struck back then, you weren't present, I wasn't present, we don't know why that deal was what it was, but one would think both parties had input and came up with a deal that made sense. Again, I don't want to say they haven't done a great job with helping the county, help the citizens or the kids or whatever it is. I just want to say, that was done under its own deal, and to stand here today and say, "Well, look back, if this deal was done before, and now somehow that means there's zero rent," you have taxpayers that you're going to have to answer to, you're a fiduciary here, and you're going to have to decide, are we going to do zero rent? Are we going to do a rent amount that's somewhat tied to what somebody else would pay and give these folks as an anchor, as a stalwart, as a party that's been there, you know, time and again, are we going to give them the opportunity to make improvements that would reduce the rent? And if you do that, is there a carryover? I mean, there's all kinds of those details that could be worked out. But that's a benefit that would be provided to them, that to my knowledge is not being provided to another entity, and I think the justification is, they've been a stalwart, they've been an anchor, they've been a party from, you know, from the beginning. Right, and so I just say all that to say to you, be really cautious when you approach this thing and say, "My heart says I want to do this." Well, there's some taxpayers out there, and believe it or not, that don't use the fairgrounds, and would want to know why my tax dollars are being spent, or let's say, there's free rent for an entity at the fairgrounds. And so you, as a court, have to be cognizant of that and make the appropriate decision using a balance that you think is appropriate. So I think Commissioner Cox pointed out all the issues. It says now, or their proposal says to us, they get a minimum of fourteen days with additional days for meetings and this, that, and the other, doesn't have a maximum on it. I don't have to know the exact number of days, but I think if you're going to calculate what an appropriate rental is, you might want to have a maximum number of days, and then they can decide whether they're going to use the max or not. The fifteen years is the other issue, and then I think whether it's going to be fifteen or five, and it wasn't, I'm not sure it was clear, and I don't mean to step on Commissioner Cox's toes, but right now, there is a termination provision that says ninety days. With ninety days' notice, you can get out, but effectively, there has to be a default of the other party. So it's not just a walkaway. You all have seen a contract that has just a walkaway. I give notice and I'm out. That's not what's in the proposal right now. And so what I think Commissioner Cox was suggesting was, we could change the ninety day to a hundred-and-eighty days, so that if anybody had plans about, the fair had plans about how they were going to use the facility, et cetera, they had plenty of notice to know that the county was going to walk away. I don't see the county walking away. I mean, whoever the county is, this mysterious guy or girl, but I don't see the county walking away from this. But what he was talking about is a hundred-and-eighty-day notice with no default, so no basis or no grounds necessarily, just say, "Hey, we want to walk away." The county's going the whole, we got extra TCD RS stuff to do, we're going to sell the fairgrounds. You give a hundred-and-eighty days' notice and you're out. If you got a fifteen-year deal and you decide to sell the fairgrounds, you're stuck, potentially having to pay them or do something, some concession to them, because you've taken away the asset. So, the hundred-and-eighty days' walkaway makes sense to me, I'm fine with plenty of notice to them, but if it's solely upon a default on their part, you're locking, you're potentially locking yourself into a fifteen-year deal. I have seen that most of the time, when the county signs a document that's any longer than two to four to five years, you know, I forget the other time the next day, I don't know about you folks, but asking the next three or four commissioners, however many it is, to know about this deal and be bound by this deal, I think is probably too much. You're tying the hands of folks that would come tomorrow and potentially have a different perspective, but at the same time, you have folks that need to build in some expectations. So what's the right number? Is it five years? Is it eight years? Is it ten, fifteen? I don't know. I mean, that's up to you all. So those are the issues that I would say that Commissioner Cox has pointed out. I wanted to make those comments, and I wanted to be sure that I stressed that there's no way, any desire of my office, and suspect no desire of any other office, to slight the fair in any way. I think this is, how do we work this out together, knowing that this is mutually beneficial potentially to the county?
So, just for clarity on my part, if we did put a dollar amount in, is that something that the fairgrounds, that the fair committee is... I'll just throw a number. Let's say it was ten thousand dollars a year. That y'all would either pay ten thousand dollars a year, or you're going to do improvements to the equivalent of ten thousand dollars a year, or is that not an obligation that the fair committee is not considering?
That's not an obligation that the fair board itself has the ability to make. We have to take it to our members, voting public, just the same as y'all's. We have to take that number to them, and they have to approve it.
Okay. But whatever the number is, is there, again, is it that the fair board and the committee and the members are saying, "We're going to make this many dollars of improvement," and let's say you did fifteen thousand dollars worth of improvements because of something that y'all felt was necessary to make the fair better, the fairgrounds manager said, "Yeah, that's a great asset, the commissioner's in agreement, the court's in agreement with it." We're not obligated then, as a county, to pay you five thousand dollars towards that improvement, or in your opinion, are we?
As far as that goes, if you're above your rent, you would think that would be in the contract, you know, lawyered up, just to say, "Hey, that five thousand dollar carries over in next year's, keep up the good work," kind of y'all.
Okay, and I would think that you do a carryover, and then the question is, do you cap the carryover? How many years?
Kind of like we do employee holidays and vacation hours.
Then you got people that got to keep up with, how many years did this get to carryover?
Mr. Krieger?
Just as a point reference, the similar situation occurred with the Grimes County Gold Texan, and their obligation was five thousand dollars a year. And when they finished their obligation, they came to the county and said, "Hey, we'd like to do something, continue our agreement." And at that time, we had a need of a digital sign up there on county road FM thirty-four fifty-five and Highway ninety, and they said, that sign, we went out and got prices, came up to be about fifteen thousand dollars, and they said, "We would like to make a three-year agreement for our commitment." They paid for that sign, so it's, we kind of got a little bit of history here, working with another organization that was in a similar situation. So I think if we got to that situation where they came in, and if we settled on a number, and just to give you an idea, if someone came to us, the rate for, I'm going to use next year's contract, is going to be thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars to rent the main hall for a Saturday event. If you rented the barns, the three barns would probably be about nine hundred dollars, the rodeo arena would be four hundred and fifty, the Lions Club is nine hundred dollars, and the Gold Texan's four fifty. So when we add all that up, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six thousand dollars. If someone came in and said, "I want to use the whole facility for an event," we're looking at probably five thousand dollars for a weekend. And so if we did that for two weekends, which is what the fair takes up, we're probably in the neighborhood of ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars, and then whatever time during the week, you know, there's going to be a reduced rate for during the week. So we're probably looking at ten to fifteen thousand dollars, if it was another situation, considering their history and what they've done to help, you know, bring the facility out of debt and pay it off and make improvements and those kind of things. I think we could settle on something, I guess the biggest, is going to be the number, and I, you know, I think if they came and said, "Hey, we can do ten thousand dollars a year, and if we spend fifteen thousand this year, we'd like five thousand to carry over to next year." Or if our project doesn't come up, but eight, five hundred, then we'll try to do a commitment for next year. I think the biggest concern is they would like to see their money put back into the facility rather than go into the general fund.
Well, and if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Cox corrected that, that it does not go back into the general fund. But it goes into the Fund Fifty, which is applied to the fairgrounds, is that correct?
It was to pay for the debt of the fairgrounds.
Pay for the debt of the fairgrounds. Is that debt paid?
Yes.
Okay. So effectively, then if it goes into Fund Fifty, there's no debt to be paid, that money can indeed be used for improvements and projects for the fairgrounds?
It would no longer go into Fifty, it would go into Thirty-six and the fairgrounds. That's the rental at the fairgrounds.
Same, but same, changing the fund numbers, but same principle?
Right.
Okay, so the monies that you folks will be giving would be going directly to that dedicated funding?
Yes.
Okay, so where are we at for this year? For, I mean, because we're in the process of the fair setup right now. Where are we at for this year?
As far as...
What's our contract with you folks right now?
There's not one in place.
There's not one in place, okay.
And if I could add something to, I guess, to address Mr. Foltz earlier.
Can you do it in a simplified fashion?
I'll try to be as quick as possible. It's not necessarily that the fair is asking for rent-free just because we've been good renters for the past since nineteen ninety-two. If you look at the number that we paid on a per-annual basis, if you date that back to nineteen ninety-two, I know most of you may not be familiar with those facilities were at that time, but Mr. Krieger can attest, you were nowhere, shape, form, or fashion going to rent that facility for fifteen to nineteen thousand dollars a year. You had a single hall, a single barn, no wash racks, none of that stuff was there. So in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, all the way to two thousand, up into So, in 1992, '93, all the way to 2000 up until now, where we actually have a larger facility that may be closer to that $15,000 mark, we were paying well over the amount that you ever would have been renting it for, for that. So, we're not saying that we've been good renters, we want this for free. What we're saying is, all those previous years of renting, we were paying way in excess of what we should have been paying. And so, now we're just asking for some appreciation or forgiveness for helping take care of the debt that was due at that time, and now offsetting that for the current years.
Okay. Thank you. So, is, if we did settle on a number, is that something that the fair committee then, okay, you have to take it back to your membership, y'all have to vote on it, but if it was, and again, I'm just using $10,000 because that's a round number, okay? But y'all committed to that, and we only did $5,000, we said that's what the rent is in either cash or project, and you go, "Hey, we got projects lined up," and then you only did $5,000, so we do a $5,000 carryover to the next year, so then it's a $15,000 obligation on your part. Is that something that y'all are considering or willing to do? Or is that not what you're willing to do?
Again, we, we're throwing it out there, we're just trying to get an agreement. It's, you know, all things are on the table, but at the end of the day, we, just like y'all, have to look out for the best thing for the county, we have to look out for the best thing for these kids that we represent, and the families, and the lifetime members. So, we're going to try to sit here and negotiate the best deal we can, but nothing's off the table as far as what we can or can't do. Mr. Krueger and myself and the board have walked through, and there's plenty of projects that I don't think that extra would be worried about right now. In the future, possibly, there's not enough projects to do, but currently, there's enough projects and labor and things that can be done out there to suffice a number.
As a recommendation, Commissioner Cox, would you be willing to head up a committee or a discussion, you and Randy and John C. from the county side, to meet with these folks and come together with a proposal that both, that you think both sides would agree on and present that back to court for us to make a decision on? Or you think that's, are you thinking that's where we're already at today?
Well, I think that's, I mean, we've had those discussions. I'll certainly do whatever the court wants me to do and whatever their company with. But I think we're to the point, we probably ought to go in a direction today, if possible, so that everybody knows what their obligations you're going to be going for. But if the court, if the court desires for me to sit down with them and talk about it some more, I certainly will.
Well, I guess with blanks in here and unknown numbers and things like that, unless somebody's ready to fill in some of the blanks today, then if we're willing to do that, then I think we can make a decision today.
And maybe my question will answer some of them. Mr. Falco, Mr. Foltz.
I refuse to answer to that.
Come on, it'll be a happy day, John.
Okay, I'm just trying to work out somebody so we can move forward. You mentioned on the term, that we talked about the 15-year versus the five-year. And most of us know that we really don't do much over five years on most of the other agreements that we have. I believe that's something we could decide on today. But with that being said, also the termination notice, you talked about 180 days with, suggested with no default, you know, notice. I don't see that in here unless I'm overlooking it.
No, it's not in here. This is something that Commissioner Cox and I talked about.
Okay.
And so, no, that is not, we can do whatever. My sense of it is, and they can beat me up if they want to, my sense of it is, if you go to the lawyer, and the lawyer says, "We're going to ask for everything, and we're going to see what we get." And so, I think we just figure out what works for both parties. So, whatever you think works for both parties, and obviously, you're looking out for one side, so I mean, both sides, I think, understand that you're coming at this from a different angle of trying to achieve a very similar purpose.
Well, I thought I saw just 30 days' notice, that's why I'm seeing it. I see that.
Well, there was 30 days that I, you must be looking at in my draft.
At number 12.
Yes, ma'am. They came back with 90 days.
Okay.
And then they struck you out, paragraph A, which said for you to pay rent when due, so that wasn't a basis for a termination, so it's other things.
Well, the fare was rent, it wasn't needed if we had zero, so that would get, if there is rent, that would get thrown back in there.
So are you, Commissioner, I hear you headed towards, maybe I'm wrong, making a motion to say, "I want to do a five-year, I want to put in 180-day," and then you're still headed to, "We need a maximum number of days," and then whether there's rent or not, and whether or not you can reduce the rent by any kind of...
Yes.
There, were you headed? Okay. I just want to be on same page.
I just wanted to try to get us a contract and get it going and get it settled, so y'all don't...
And just on that five-year deal that is suggested, we threw out 15 because we were paying on a 15-year note. So, at that time, when the county is receiving money, it was okay for the county to get in a 15-year obligation from us. So, we thought, hey, if we can pay on 15, well, maybe we can get a discount for 15. That's the longevity behind it, is because things here change hands so quickly, as well as on our side.
Sure.
If we had something stable to hold us through, you know, instead of changing every four years and the fair not knowing.
Is that something that you'd have to take back to your board if you came in with five years?
We have to take it back to the board on the monetary value.
Just on the monetary value?
Yeah, but it would all be, we're able to sign if they approve it, and they would approve it in the lump sum.
And I get what you're saying, and I also understand what our county attorney said. We're obligating ourselves to a building that, should we decide six or seven years or years from now to sell, then there's that possibility, we've already signed an agreement with you for 15, and we're bound by that.
Well, I'm almost certain that even in cattle leases and things like that, there's a phrase you can put in there, you would be able to say that better, to put in there that, hey, if the county decides to sell this, we are now free from this obligation. I'm sure there's verbiage.
Yeah, yeah, but, and that's just an example. I mean, what if, what if you have folks who were clamoring for the use, and there were people that said, "I want to rent it for a year, and I'll pay you a million dollars a day." I mean, let's just be hyperbolic about it. Are you then locked into a free thing, when you're underwater to the tune of $150,000 to $200,000 a year? I'm just saying, you don't know what tomorrow brings, is all, but you're exactly right. We can put whatever language for whatever contingency we want to stick in there. I would make the one comment, I suspect that the 15-year deal on the previous thing was because the county was stepping in to help bail out the circumstance, and to be able to do that, needed commitments for everybody to pay a note that was going to be a 15-year note. If the commitment was shorter than that, everybody's obligation would have been higher than that. So, I suspect that, but I wasn't there when it got to that.
That was on the original note, though, but then the county did an additional maintenance that was, had nothing to do with the original debt. It was on improvements that the county itself wanted to make to the facilities, and those same organizations with the addition of a new one joined in. And that, again, was a 15-year commitment, so that wasn't anything related to the original debt that was acquired. That was new debt that the county did for improvements. Correct, Randy?
She knows better than I, she knows better than I, I don't know all the details.
So, those organizations, that was in 2002, I believe, right?
There was two separate notes. The original note started in 1992. That was the assumed debt where the county actually purchased the facility itself. And those organizations went in to cover that debt, so that was 15 years. Once that 15-year debt was paid and the county facility was free and clear, then the county wanted to do improvements to the facilities, add additional farms, there's some parking lot improvements. Those same organizations with an addition of a new organization then entered that contract with the county, nothing related to the original debt, and that, again, was done on a 15-year note.
Those, those organizations, names of those again?
It was the Fair Association, the Grimes County Port Boys, the Go Texan, and at that point, the Plannersville Stone and Bunch joined in. The original note was just the three of us, and then the Plannersville Stone and Bunch joined in on the last one.
And the Port Boys is now gone.
Correct.
The Port Boys is now dissolved.
They're poorer than they were, apparently. Point, my point is, if any of those groups says the same thing to you, you have to address the thing the same way. And so, just be cognizant of that, is all I'm suggesting. Anyway, I'm, Commissioner...
If I may make one comment, back in 1980, whenever the county, the Fair Association lost the fairgrounds, this was put to a vote that year in the election in November. The county did a one-half of 1% tax rate on that in case that passed, so it would be paid for. That tax rate is still in effect today because it's never been rescinded. There's been a bunch of money collected, and that has not ever been brought up in these, in these meetings, or anybody said anything about it. I did some research back in probably 2016, I think, on that. There's quite a bit of money that was raised throughout the years with that one-half of 1% tax rate. That money was never used for debt, it's still sitting there in the general fund. So, we're not as deep underwater in this project as you think we are. In addition to that, the leadership skills, the knowledge that these kids learn from the fair outweigh the money that we're spending out there. I can assure you that, and keeping them off of the streets.
And I believe the original wording on that half a percent was that money was supposed to be earmarked and designated specifically to maintenance of the fairgrounds, and I'm not sure that that money has accurately been allocated.
That money is, was to, we don't have the debt service rate any longer because we don't have the debt, so we no longer have that tax rate. And that money for that tax rate was supposed to be allocated to debt service. It's for debt, to pay for debt. It's not sitting in general fund. It was sitting in Fund 50.
Okay. But that was to purchase the fairgrounds at that time? Wouldn't win. Go ahead, Randy.
If I could.
Sure.
The only thing I would suggest is that rather than using the term rent, that we say that it's a financial commitment for X number of years for improvements to the facility. Instead of calling it rent, we could say it's a financial commitment that they're making toward improvements to be used. I think that's what, that's what their, what their goal in all this was. And the stick, I think the thing that we could do today, give this a thought, would, if the court could agree to come up with an amount, a yearly amount, to be agreed upon by both organizations, by both parties, and then a total number of days that they, that they have for use of the facility, and I think, I'm sure they've got, they've got a number in mind that they can, they can put forward. And then, the term of the agreement, I think we could get this resolved today and put it back in the hands of the county attorney to draw this up, and come back, present it to you and to them, and then both parties sign, and we can get this thing moving forward.
Didn't you mention earlier about $10,000? Was that your suggestive comment?
Before you go, we, well, we need to know what their maximum days is. If you're just, if you're spec, because they've put a 14 minimum, and they want some other days. If you want to tie it to some number that Mr. Krueger's putting out there, we've got to know what their maximum is. Not that anybody wants to deny them the time, you just got to know what time that they're talking about.
What kind of days were y'all looking at?
And just to clarify on those additional days, those are for like tag-ins and meetings, so we're not talking about utilizing the facility for the entire day, and worst-case scenario, if the facility was rented, we can actually relocate those things, but, or we can...
Like we did last year on the town.
Or we can do them in the front parking lot. It's just a place, a central place for all those exhibitors to come and ear-tag or whatever their animals for that year. So, it's not like we're physically using the main hall or the, it's not as many full-time days. You're only talking about an hour or two that we're on the facilities to actually ear-tag. And then we have a monthly meeting that's there that's typically an hour on a Tuesday night, second Tuesday of the month, so it's not a high rental day, and we're only using one building, the Go Texan. And there's been times that the Go Texan was needed for poker days or whatever, and we simply locate to wherever Randy had available, so.
So, if you have 12 meetings, and then you have 14 days for the fair, that's 26. I mean, what, what...
I guess, I guess our, I guess from our perspective, 26 days on paper looks big, when in all reality, 12 of those days is for, from 7:00 to 9:30 on a Tuesday evening in one of the, in the smallest buildings out, one of the smallest buildings out there. So, if you, I don't want, I don't want to sit here and everybody get caught up with a 26-day, and we're looking at a, thinking in our minds that we're a full day, when in all reality, it's a Tuesday night at 7:00. And quite frankly, when was the last time it was rented at Tuesday night at 7:00 P.M. from 7:00 to 9:30? Yes. That's what I want to be...
To put, put a number on it, it's 14 days for the fair, and then a maximum of 30 days outside of the fair. So, 45 would be a round number.
45.
Okay. And let me ask this question in a way that's kind of like this, but it seems to me that Mr. Krueger's familiar with the usage and when days are popular, when they're not, and what the rental rates are. It seems to me that we need to have those days and intended uses, and Randy comes up with what would be the usual rent for that, and then you all stare at that number and say, "Do we want to cut that number?" And that's, you can sit here, now, we're going to go through each day, now, how's this going to use going to be, and how you, I just think that this is maybe too big for a collective body to tackle. I think it sounds like it makes more sense for Randy to try to tackle that and then bring that number in, and they say, you know, "Randy's full of crap, this is way too high," or whatever the deal is. But they know the use, Randy, and those folks know the uses they're talking about. I'm not sure the rest of the court does, and to try to pull it off right now, I may come up with a number that you're not happy with later.
Yeah, now, I, and what I presume to you, you want to know with the, I think that we could agree, or have a starting number of $10,000, I think that's a good starting point for us, for what they're asking for to be used.
And maybe, and maybe it is, but let me just say, as it reads right now, "A minimum of 14 days during the days specified for the Grimes County Fair, and use of a portion of the facility on the premises throughout each year, with meetings, tag-ins, miscellaneous fundraisers, and the like." That's what it says. We've got to do better than that. I mean, because what'll end up happening is, Randy may have a pact, and those folks, not these folks, folks that come after them that are not nearly as kind, will say, "Hey, wait a second, I'm supposed to be entitled to the like, and this is my day." Well, that's what I'm saying. We've got to hammer out what kind of meetings they're talking about, and on what days those are going to be. And now, Randy may feel comfortable saying, "Now, it's 10," but as your lawyer, I just, this language is too vague. You can't enforce this, and you can't, you really can't defend it all that well either. And so, we need a hard description of those days that they're going to need, potentially what the max is, and put in here as clear as we possibly can, so that the people who aren't nearly as smart as we all are that come tomorrow have to try to figure this out. We will have written it out in black and white.
But in the same contract, doesn't it clarify that we have to present our list of days to the fairgrounds manager and the...
They do now.
Right, but he can't deny it, is the point. If this is the purpose that you get, then yeah, you submit it, but you can't say no if you don't get it for that. And all I'm saying is, I only come up with it now, with those days standing to be and what the max is, and this is subject to modification at any point. You didn't reveal the day, you could modify it tomorrow.
One of my thoughts is that if we could dedicate how many days that you folks need to use the facility, you know, the Expo Center and all of that, and count a tag-in as a day, or whatever, even though it's a partial. But then, as far as these meetings, I don't think we need to obligate those meetings to contract dates. I've got a, not Grimes County Crime Stoppers at the moment in that role, but Grimes County Crime Stoppers uses this facility, this room here, one meeting a month, and we don't have a contract with them for 12 days of usage on an annual basis. So, I don't, I don't know that we need to incorporate your meeting times into the contract. And if it's inconvenient for us to let you use the Go Texan or the Lions Club, when we get the new facility open, and it's going to be open sometimes, but we're going to have a commissioners' court there that's going to be available, and we can get you scheduled on a regular, what did you say, your second Tuesday?
Second Tuesday of the month.
Now, I don't know that the second Tuesday of the month is obligated to this point. We could work something out, and how many do you generally have at your, your meetings?
There's less, there's, there's more people out here than they can...
There's less, there's, there's more people out here than we think.
Okay. So what, what I'm getting at is, you know, the, the commissioners' court over there would accommodate your need, or if you're a group of six or eight, 12 or less, we can even have you meet in the jury room, which we're going to have two or three or four over there. So I don't, I don't think we need to get your meeting dates in a contract form. I think what's important is when, how many days a year are we probably going to take access to the Expo Center out? So if it's 14 days for the fair, and then a tag-in and a couple of other events, then maybe we're looking at 15 or 16 days max. And now we're not talking about, well, golly, they got 26, or they got 35. Randy?
Judge, if I could just make the recommendation that we, the wording would say that they have two, they have the use of the facility for two weeks prior to and during the fair. Monthly meetings, you know, that they have to use for 12 monthly meetings, and maybe 10 other days. I mean, we're not, we, we don't, the other lists that I get from them are 10 other days. I think we can come to some kind of agreement. Just rather than stating 12 days for this or whatever, to allow them to have their monthly meetings and their annual meeting, and to be able to do their 10 other dates, 10 other days ought to cover everything in there. And it would just, we can work that out between the parties as long as we're there. And it's, I agree, we don't need to convolute it with specific times of Tuesday at 10:00 or 12:00, 7:00. We can just say for, for the two weeks during the fair, and for their monthly meetings, and 10 other days for, you know, additional hours.
Be coordinated with the fairgrounds.
Correct, yes.
In advance.
Correct. They, they do provide a list every year of saying, this is when we're going to do the rabbit tattooing, and this is when we're going to do the tag-ins for the steers, swine, this and that. So I mean, I, we get a list of that. They send it to me, and if I see any conflict, I'll call right away and say, oh, I have the Go Texan assignment is that night. And they'll say, okay, we can go to the Lounge Club, I can move you to the big hall, whatever we have to do. So all, all of that can be worked out between both organizations, and doesn't need to get tangled up.
Can I ask a question? Are you, the 10 number you're throwing out, you're just tying that to the 14 days then, right?
Yes. So in other words.
For 24, basically.
Yes. Two weekends for the, for the fair.
No, the 10 days would be other days.
Monthly meetings and 10 additional days.
Right, but the 10 grand, I'm sorry. The number he was saying was rent tied to the fair. The rest of the stuff is not rent coordinated with him.
I would not like to use the term rent.
I'm with you, I'm with you. The guy said 10. He thought I was talking about 10 days. I was talking about 10 grand.
Right, right.
And, and he wants to change the terminology to financial.
Yeah, whatever, whatever makes everybody happy doesn't make any difference to me, what you call it. But I, that, that to me is fine, especially if we put in there, be coordinated with the fairgrounds manager, that the additional days are so minimal, and let's say electricity and AC and all that stuff is minimal, that the 10, you feel like that the 10 that they pay for the two weeks covers that. Seems fine to me. I mean, that's something I could write up. Let me just say, this is not for me to make apologies. This is for you all. But that seems to me something I could write up.
And the termination notice, is everyone in agreement for like 180 days?
And again, just if I could, because a lot of times when you have these events, they have contracts with stock contractors and other people, that they may make a commitment and say, hey, okay, we're going to do this. And then they have a commitment maybe to an artist, or to another event or something, or a, I'm just using an amusement company, a carnival company, or somebody like that that comes in. But they need to know in advance that we just don't drop the bomb and say, oh, by the way, three months from now, we're going to end this. They need to be able, be able to get out of contracts and be able to negotiate contracts in good faith with people, so that they can plan for the next years of that.
So was that?
The 180 days, I think is acceptable, or, or a good policy number, I think.
For any reason. For any reason. Yes.
And?
And if you do that, 15 years is okay. If either party can get out on six months notice, then it doesn't really matter if it's 15 or five. It doesn't matter to me. If it makes somebody feel that that is more in the, the sense of working together, fine by me. If it didn't have that provision, then I would say it needs to be shorter so people can reassess on a regular basis. This gives you the ability to reassess.
So if it had that provision.
Yes, ma'am.
Then we could put in the 15-year.
Because if, if you have 180-day provision where you can walk without a default, you can reassess and say, do we need to do something differently? If you have a five-year that says you can only end this if there's been a default via X, Y, or Z, then potentially you're locked into a lengthy term. So I'm saying that the trade-off is if they do 180 days, I don't, a 15-year deal is, is okay, because you can still reassess on a regular basis.
If you do, if you do 180-day with a, that you can cancel the contract for no, for no reason, I guess, what protection does the business, going back to your comment earlier about being vague? I mean, basically, whether it's 15-year, 200-years, 10,000-years, for any reason, this court changes over, in three years, they wake up and say, no, we're not doing it today for any reason. We're back in the same boat. Here we are, three years from now, back in the same boat. Just.
The provision I would like to see in there as well is, if we go out and spend a half million dollars to cover, cover the arena, I want a provision in there to protect my organization, saying, no, the county's going to, if we agreed on 10,000, the county's going to find some way to repay me or do something for that half million dollars I just put up, if you were able to walk out a year later.
Well, I think that provision comes in with approval of the project to the fairgrounds manager and the commissioner. I don't necessarily know. And we'll just use your scenario. I don't know that if that were the case, that that would be a pretty weighty obligation, and that probably would be a situation where the whole court would need to be involved.
Correct. Agreed. I'm just saying that if we have a lot invested, because we're expecting to be there 15 years, I don't want the county to switch hands and they say, oh, we, we can sell this thing for four and a half million dollars now, and we don't have to pay the Grimes County Fair Association back, when they just put whatever the money is involved in it.
I think that provision could also be put in, into the contract, because it's outstanding balance. Because that would be in lieu, if we did that in lieu of rent, you know, it would be for however much was spent, you know, for $10,000 a year. I guess if we ever did sell it or stop, then it would have to be, would that be written in there as well, John, or is that kind of slippery slope?
Oh, some people can write just about anything, Chad. Yes, we can write it in. I, I would hope that if they wanted to spend a half a million dollars, that we would have a side agreement that said, this is what they're going to get out.
So it wouldn't buy, yeah, they wouldn't buy that contract if there was something separate that could be.
If they were going to spend half a million dollars to improve an asset that wasn't theirs, I would hope that they would say, we need something else in writing besides this deal where there's 180 days. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would hope.
Well, I want to assure the court and your committee, I will not be here in 15 years. Unless y'all have been in a little urn, you know, a sprinkle.
On the 180 days, so, we sign a contract, next year we dump $40,000 in a speaker system that we've all talked about. What keeps the court from changing over in two years, saying, no, no honor allowed, we're, we're canceling this contract for no reason. Now, here we are, stuck with $40,000 of improvements. We've only been able to get half of that back. And on the third year, we're getting our 180-day notice.
I don't disagree. And that would be an issue when you go to spend those funds, can we modify this contract? We're not going to spend this county to improve this asset unless you agree that we're going to get a credit, or we're going to be in this thing for five long, five years. Now, it goes back to, you can do 180 days, no, no default, make as long as you want to. Or you can do it, I think, on their 90 days and make it five years. And they've got the five years essentially. But in that last year, they're still going to be making the same assessment. Do we spend $40,000 when only, we only have a year left? But it's subject to modification. And just come back to the court and say, we're about to spend 40 grand. Can we, can we make a deal that will get another five years out of this thing? And the cap, the people sitting in your chairs will know this improvement won't get made unless they make that deal. So there'll be reason enough to make that modification. And I just would think from their perspective, they would never spend those dollars without some assurance that they're going to have a longer-term lease. And if they want that now, from my perspective, the, the five years is the way to go. You cap it now. And if they come in and say, we're about to spend something that will be more than 10,000 a year for five years, can we modify the agreement or have a side agreement? I can't imagine this court would say no.
And, and I think he covered a lot of that in, in the language also. That was under the suggested contract that he had for consideration, where you take your project before the manager of the facility, and, and I guess he gets some approval or some input from the commissioners' court. And then, you know, that kind of might would help solve some of that issue down the road. But like you said, it could be modified along the way. If we see a problem that crops up, and many times we do, we can make modification. We're just trying to get it, get it to where we're, we're pretty much in agreement, what needs to go in here, so we can get a term solved, so y'all can get on with, with the business at hand. So I don't know if you prefer the 15-year, 180-day.
I guess why can't we do 180-day with a little bit of, with a little bit of string attached that says, we can't just cancel this just because somebody wakes up on wrong side of the bed?
Well, there are, there is a list in one of y'all's.
You can, you can do that. And I was thinking, from y'all's perspective, you might want to do the 90, but I'm okay with 190. But are you saying you're okay with five-year? Because if we do that, and you've got to have a basis for the termination, then that's what I'm saying is, if neither party can get out automatically to then reassess where they are at the moment, we need to have shorter terms rather than a 15-year term. So I'm okay, from my perspective, either 90 or 180. But if we're doing it on a fault basis, then I think the term has to be shorter than the 15, is my point.
I just, I've never seen her, I have not paid rent to a landlord that said I can get out of the contract for any reasons. That's just, that's, that's what I'm coming up on right now.
Well, and we don't have to, but I'm, I'm telling you, it's, it's a term that's in lots of leases, and either party, this is when both parties want flexibility. And in this case, if you say, we don't want flexibility, then I think you're asking for, let's not do a no-fault basis, let's not do a 180 with no reason to get out, let's do a 90 or 180. And you have to have a reason. I think that's what I'm hearing you say. And if you say that, I get it, it's fine. I'm just saying, from the court's perspective, maybe they want to limit the term then, as opposed to a 15-year term to a five-year term.
I guess what's, what has changed, what has changed since 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, when we signed the original agreement that said 15 years, we couldn't get out for any reason.
These people have changed, and so has the fair board. Those people aren't here anymore.
Yeah.
But today's a new day. I mean, and we, we have a new situation also. I think we're, you know, we get two groups, and we're both working in good faith. So.
So just trying to work out.
I would say, given their, the issue that they've raised, and it's certainly a fair point, I don't, don't, let me hear, or say it was. But if they're concerned that it needs to be based upon a fault, someone does something default, someone does something wrong, I'm just saying from the county's perspective, you may want to do a shorter term rather than a longer term. For me, I'm saying five versus 15. Shoot, it could be any number that you want to come up with.
And I think one of the things that might alleviate some of your heartburn is, for the county to get out of this situation, you have to, the, the whole court has to vote on that. It's not just going to be one commissioner that comes over there and says, you made me mad, we're, we're out. The whole court has to make that decision. And that's, uh, it's, in my mind, that makes it a little more safer, if that's the word you want to term.
Absolutely.
For you, but it's just my opinion.
And given our, our recent renovations that we've made, this court, I don't think had that in mind at all to do, you know, to make that type of commitment to, to the building. So I think any of it is, you know, if it's a problem, we could always come back and, and modify or talk about the, talk about the lease a little bit more in depth. We're just trying to come up with some terms today, so we can put it in.
No, absolutely. And I'm all in favor for a longer, for a longer term. I'm, I'm, don't, I don't want to sit here and act like I'm not. I'm 100% all in favor for a 15-year deal. It keeps us from having to sit down here every five years and try to work through this and spend an hour.
And then you have different people.
And then we're a totally different group. Y'all are a totally different group, so.
We just said we're voting against you, Fisher.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. I mean, I've made some observations about this. If it, it might make a little more palatable. I mean, we, this court voted to spend a significant amount of money to, to do some improvements out there, and probably in the future going forward, maybe not this court, but maybe another one, will do the same again. But one thing I do want to point out, based on my research and conversations with people in the know, the fairgrounds has never been self-sustaining. It's never made money. And the taxpayers and the people that are in the seats to make the decisions have always stepped forward and said, this is a significant enough venue, event, location, asset in the county that we are willing to invest in it. So it, I don't, I, I would never foresee the county just getting up and saying, we're, we're walking away. I've always thought that there have been good dialogues between the organizations out there and the county. There may be some heartburn from time to time over, you know, leaks in the roof or things like that, but those can get fixed, and we will work together to make that happen. But, I mean, I just, I personally feel good about the 180 for, for any reason, and that it doesn't bother me.
So 180 for 15?
Uh, John?
Yes, ma'am. This is a term that, if they're, what I'm trying to create is flexibility, because when you have entities that change hands and can't remember from one day to the next, and have different minds, and different consensus, and different viewpoints, and a different environment, and all things, those things change from one decade to the next, I think you want some flexibility. And so if you're doing, if you're willing to do 15-year, then there needs the ability to reassess on a regular basis. That would be the 180-day provision. If, on the other hand, you said, I want there to be some solace, some peace from the fair's perspective, that we're not going to say, this was all a game, and now we're giving you notice, and you're out in six months. If you want to give them some assurance, you could say, we'll do a five-year. And there doesn't have to be that 180-day provision that says for no basis. It could be a provision that says there has to be a reason to, to terminate. So you got any of one of those scenarios, or either one of those scenarios and some in between, that you can say, this is what you, as the county commissioners' court, feel comfortable with.
So they, they feel like 15 years would be agreeable for them?
Right. And if they want, if they're, if they're saying that is more palatable to them, then it seems to me 180-day provision without any fault to be able to walk away. Now, some, somebody, probably maybe somebody picked 180. I mean, you could pick a number, it doesn't have to be 180. But I would like to give them as much notice and as much time as possible, so they can make arrangements. Heck, I don't want them to commit to spend any money and then be scammed by whoever's sitting in your seats to say, yeah, we got that asset, we're going to sell the fairgrounds. I don't think anybody's intending to do that. And I think you just make it a way that assures them that's not going to be the case. And to be honest, if I'm on the fair board, and I'm looking at spending 50,000, and I'm looking at, I'm in a five-year guaranteed deal where I'm only kicked out if I default, and I hadn't defaulted, but I'm in the last year, I'm not going to spend 50 grand without getting you guys to approve extending the deal. I mean, it's, it just seems to me they would do that, and it seems to me the court would agree to that. So if they want 15 years, if that makes them, makes the contract more palatable to them, I would say from the court, if you want to maintain flexibility, you need 180-day provision without some default.
Which is what Commissioner Cox suggested. Right, I think that was his suggestion.
That would be, I mean, that's, I think that they allow both organizations some flexibility.
I agree.
Okay. So we're, you all.
While we're talking about flexibility here, so total number of days, that 14, we put as a, we, we asked for a minimum of 14, because obviously we want to see this thing grow. Hopefully, we're, in five years, we're coming to, coming to you saying, hey, we need more than 14 days, we need, we need 20 days. How do we address that? How do we address that then, once this, once our organization has grown, and we, we are now becoming, we're now out of that realm of our maximum 14 days? That's why we requested a minimum 14, so.
From my seat, I would think that if you grow, that is a good thing.
Sure.
And I can't foresee the court, if you would come back to the court and say, hey, we, we need more than 14 days, we're that big. The court would probably say, okay.
We can make it. I'm, I'm just putting everything on the table at this point.
It would be, well, it'd be subject to modification. Let's say there were other members on the court though who were, you know, Scrooges and they said, wait a second, we're making money all the time and now if we allow more days and they're paying less, then we want to keep all the paying folks on this deal and we want to give you the time. You're out, you know this, and I don't want to be ugly about it, this is why this is a negotiable deal. You're out is to say, well, forget it, we'll go to some other place to do our deal. That's why these folks will have the incentive to modify it. So it will be subject to modification, which allows you to change the deal. Now, even if it says, as all of you know, even if it says, you got to give 180 days notice, we could all agree tomorrow to do a modification. You don't have to wait 180 days if everybody agrees. I just think there's enough incentive on both sides here to work out the deal for whatever makes sense for the fair when those days come along. My intention was to put in 14 days for the fair, and then I thought we were putting in 12 days for monthly meetings and 10 other days, and those will be coordinated with the fairgrounds manager. That's how it stands right now.
And the 10 other days, if the fair grows, we need five of those other days, then we can talk about that with.
You bet.
Mayor.
You bet. Whoever that manager happens to be at the time.
Okay, so y'all have his agreement, right? Y'all receiving it? And Judge, I think we worked out most of what I saw glaring out at us.
Can I carry over, the full amount can be carried over if any improvements that are approved by the fairgrounds manager? Is that right?
I thought you had that, but.
You're okay with that? I just want a note so I can write it up. Just tell me. And so carry over as much, so if they did a $50,000 improvement, they would get 10,000 for the first year, plus they'd have four years' credit for that 50,000, right? Carry over for the full amount? Okay.
Can y'all live with that?
For the length of the term, correct?
The rent amount is my next big question.
But that's the length of the term, 15.
That's the idea. The question though is, it still poses this issue of the 180 days.
Well, if we're into the latter years and there's a bigger investment, then of course we'll be back in here renegotiating, trying to get that next 15 for that amount.
I was going to say, anytime you're going to spend more than a year's amount, I would say you probably ought to ask for a side agreement that says, I'm sure to get my lease for a term to cover all of the dollars.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I think that'll be the next.
Oh, the rent, that's what.
The rent?
So we got the total number of days, the 15-year term, the 180 days, and we obviously discuss the rent amount, so.
I thought I heard Mr. Krieger. And all that, you know, that's a good number for the county, but we would like to challenge that due to the fact, of course, with the current situation and the rain and everything, we were forced to go out and look to have it in other places because currently we don't know what's going to happen with weather. Every other place we've been to has their own pens, they set them up, they pay for the cleaning, they pay for the security for that $10,000. The association itself hires cleaners, we do all the volunteer work to set the pens up, and we have almost 500 volunteer hours in just to get ready for the fair, plus what goes on during the fair. So we, as an organization, would like to have some consideration on that note due to the fact that we do put in way more than any other surrounding county would charge us to do at their facility.
So what is the number you propose?
I'd like to say.
When I saw zero on the front page.
You know, the smaller it is, the better, but.
What do y'all think is reasonable? Other than zero? And I'm not saying zero's not reasonable, I'm just asking.
I think between 2,500 and 5,000 for the organization that we are and the things that we do, I mean, you can go up to Brazos County, they're a bigger facility, they're higher upgrades, high-end, but they set up everything for you for that same price.
They do that for 10,000 or 5,000?
They do it for 10.
10.
But they spend 500 hours.
And the cleanup costs and things included with that.
Cleanup costs, pens set up, cleanup afterwards. You walk in with your briefcase, you put on, the pens are set up, you put on your show, you literally turn around and walk away.
So for two weeks, it'd be 10,000 dollars?
And Washington County, their contract is $12,000 is what they pay, and that's a 25-year contract that they're actually in the point of renewing as we speak.
It wouldn't be 14 days at those facilities because they have the cooler fans and you can actually show during the day there. For the safety of our animals at our facility, currently, we can't show during the day. So if we upgrade our facility, we could possibly shorten that 14-day period.
But I just heard something about wanting to do more days for the fair, but then we're also doing 12 days for meetings and 10 days for the other. Does Brazos, with that amount you're talking about in Brazos County, would cover that?
No, sir, that's not included, that's just the 14 days. That's just the fair itself, but we're just asking for consideration.
Fairgrounds manager, what's your thought? Because you know what the market is out there from what you've done with the renting.
We do, the cattle shows, they do their own setup. I mean, we assist them, but I can tell you that 75% of the work out there is done by the diversion crew.
Okay.
That the county provides them. 500 hours, yes, they may be 500 hours, but I can tell you that the diversion crew sets up, they take down. Now, a lot of, they come back afterwards and they do, have a lot of volunteers that set up, you know, and do a lot of other things, but that's going to be for the court's side, I think.
What is our janitorial cost this year?
2,100.
And what's the security?
We don't have that number yet.
Again, we're just asking for leadway on that due to, you know, the added expenses.
What did y'all pay last year?
As far as?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay.
I don't think they've given anything collected the last two years.
No, sir.
Because last year was, I guess, with COVID, was extenuating circumstances.
And that's the other thing that was smart, this whole deal is that we don't want to continue to sit here and try to be on the coattail of the county and ask it for this thing for, without a contract and thinking that the county is thinking that fair association is taking advantage of the county.
No.
That's never been the situation.
We haven't thought that, well, I haven't.
Just a couple of comments. I mean, I do, would like the court to take into consideration the premise behind all of this, and I think setting the rent, I don't, what'd you call it, Randy, financial commitment?
Financial commitment.
Commitment as low as possible. I would hope to see some of that pass through to the youth in the form of lower entry fees and more on their checks at the end of the day. I think that's what it's kind of all about, and I don't know that we do that any favor by making it more burdensome on the fair association. You mentioned $2,500 today. I personally don't have any issue with that, but I'm willing to do whatever the court thinks is a fair amount. But I do think that we need to keep in mind what the end result of this is, and that is to get the youth in our county to participate in things that are beneficial.
You bet.
In tons of ways, as Commissioner Dobinsky pointed out.
But we also, I think, need to protect ourselves for, like Mr. Fords talked about, is, you know, if another entity wants to come in and get the same rate just for, you know, hasn't been a part of the county for a while or just beginning or something like that, we won't want to subject ourselves to a lawsuit.
And just a question.
And fairness, and I thought I heard, you know, talked about it's around $10,000. It sounds like a rate minus maybe $2,000 for if y'all do the cleanup versus the county doing the cleanup, so, or paid for the cleanup, so. I mean, that could be.
I guess my other question, my other thing is, comment made is, say this thing goes to court from another entity that's coming in that's saying, why are y'all giving it to them for free? Why not? I mean, where does the fact that we've spent, the fair association spent $580,000, where A organization, A over here, you haven't spent that money with the county, whereas this organization has spent this money with the county?
And that's what I was fixing to ask, is that $15,000 of financial obligation that we were paying in 1992, does that give the court justification for a lesser rate today since we were overpaying by maybe five times the amount it should have been back then?
Well, it's going to be determined by the court if that case arises, but I guess the question that I would ask, and it's easy for us to Monday morning quarterback, why did those parties enter such a bad deal if it was such a bad deal? And my thought is that there was, there were forces behind why that was done. If you enter a bad deal with somebody and then you pay for 10 years and you say, hey, because that was such a bad deal for me, I should get another 10 years for free, I don't know where that happens in the real world.
The only other thing I would like to suggest or mention is, is that building costs today, improvement costs today are what they were 15 years ago versus what they're going to be if we're considering 10, 15 years from now. You know, what's $10,000 going to buy five years from now, 10 years from now? I mean, we know what, you know what building costs, you know, what you've got over there. And so that would not be the only thing that I would ask you to consider is, is what will the financial commitment buy two years, five years down the road, considering what building costs and supplies and labor and everything else is going to be?
And I just want to try, I didn't address Mr. Fords' question too well, I don't think. If somebody came in and said, look, you've allowed this other group to do this, and our group is providing this benefit to the kids of the community also, how come you won't give this to us? We think it's because of X, and they throw out whatever reason it is, and they file a federal suit, and we're on our heels at the courthouse and explaining, this is why they got a different deal. You don't know how that judge or jury is going to decide that, and you don't know whether that, well, they overpaid for many years. I suspect the judge or the jury would be skeptical of that reasoning. And if, God forbid, that your choice on the second circumstances of folks that are in a protected class, I don't think that's going to win. I don't think that argument's going to succeed. They overpaid for the last 15 years, I don't think that's going to be successful. Now, is that going to happen? I don't know. It's doubtful. You keep me around because I try to dream up train wrecks that might happen based upon train wrecks I've already seen, but that is a possible train wreck. And I think, to be honest, when you ran for office, whether you knew it or not, you were saying, I'm going to be a fiduciary of the taxpayer dollars and that's going to be of primary importance to me, even though my heart may say, I want to do X, Y, and Z. And so I think in this case, you can actually find a balance to do.
And I guess my only question to the equality side of things is, if you do a public records request of the rental of the county facility, currently, there's been organizations that have had zero ties to the fairgrounds or investments in it that have been charged a lesser amount than what's stated on the actual contract. And those things, I mean, they didn't come to court and ask for a decreased rent or anything, it was just granted to them. So all I'm asking, or what we're asking as an association, for our long-term commitment to y'all to negotiate that contract agreement that y'all have to rent by. And those are public records that were requested for the last two years. So what I'm saying is if y'all said the main hall was costing $3,100 or $3,000, there's been times that that amount was not charged to other entities that had no long-term commitment to the county itself.
As the fair manager, you have other organizations that have commitment, commitments such as Go Texas. How do you handle that? I mean, are they paying for the cleanup, setup, what?
Yes. They do all their own, they pay for their cleanup, they do all their own setup, everything else. They use, if the diversion crew is available, they use them and they take care of, like I said, they pay for the cleanup just like everybody else does.
Security, janitorial services, all of that's paid for by the Go Texas committee.
Now, you made a suggestion earlier to minus the 10,000 minus, what did y'all say y'all had, 20, was it 2,000?
2,100 in janitorial services, but then we also pay our security in addition to the janitorial services.
I think the focus right now for us would be the janitorial services because of diversion, the contribution.
That does not include the supplies, the fairgrounds. We provide all the supplies during, all the toilet tissue, all the cleaning, all the trash bags, all the hand towels, everything else, we provide all that during the fair, just like we would for anybody.
For anybody else. That's part of our contract agreement.
Just to clarify, we pay for about half of those trash bags because we usually.
We get them from NIS.
Randy doesn't have enough stockpile for us because we go through a lot, so we cover up the extra costs that he doesn't have in stock.
Does anybody have a motion for the amount per year?
I think it could even go as a, as a security for, not just for the fair association, but in any future contracts that might arise will be, you know, a contract, if they want to reduce the rate, it would be a dollar amount in case we had to go clean up. Or do we have that type of thing right now? If we had to come back and clean up after the fact of, if it wasn't cleaned up before?
You have a security deposit, that's basically.
We have a deposit, we charge $300 for it.
Okay, so it's not, it wouldn't be like the $2,000, which is what they.
There's a, yeah, we do have a damage waiver in there, says if something is damaged or whatever, that we can, we can go after them, we can turn it in to the county attorney and have him go after.
Just, you're talking about covering security on the place, not security for the rent, right? And you're saying security is.
Yes, I'm saying we provide our security on the place.
I got you. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just in reference to, yeah, security deposit, you know, for cleanup.
I got you.
Now, I think the contract already includes something like if we damage the facilities or whatever, that we're responsible for those damages.
So I mean, if we started off with a $10,000 amount, but that, I mean, that's just the number that's been thrown around, and we take the 2,500 for clean, cleaning, what was the figure, 2,000?
2,100.
And the security cost, we're probably down to roughly $5,000 if we're going to give them credit for that already.
Are you making a motion?
Not, I'd like to hear what if anybody's anything else.
If we get a motion, we can have that during discussion.
Like, if that's the market value, you know, for that, for that type of event, you know, if it's similar to Brazos County, and they include the cleanup, security and everything for the $10,000 mark, I think, you know, somewhere in that, maybe that's what the security costs. Is it about $2,000 as well?
Probably a little more, but I mean, we, I mean, I don't have, I don't have that in the general ballpark area.
So the $5,000 would be a good number if we'd be market valued for anything else, so.
Just so I hear clearly though, you're, this is because they're an anchor, because they're a stalwart, this is because all, because every other person that has an issue, a thing out there has to provide security also, and so I don't want to say that that's the reason, the sole reason.
No, no, I mean, I think because it's market value too now with what this, because of this long-term agreement.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
Because it has a long-term agreement, that's what would be within that market value.
And that's what we've been asking for forgiveness for the whole time, is for the long-term commitment that we've had to the county and the facility itself.
Yeah, I've heard that. I just want to be sure that if somebody else shows up and says, I have a security cost and it's two, and you let these other folks not have to pay rent based upon that, that we're saying out loud that the reasoning for the reduction is not solely because of that security cost that every other group may have. That's all.
I'm willing to take a stab at it.
Please do, sir.
I move that we approve a contract or an agreement with the Grimes County Fair Association for a term of 15 years to specify that the number of days used would be 14 for the fair, 12 for monthly meetings, and 10 additional days, all to be a court. 12 for monthly meetings, and 10 additional days, all to be coordinated with the fairgrounds manager in advance, that the contract contain 180-day exit clause with no default, that the financial amount be $5,000 that can be paid in cash and/or in kind with labor or projects, and all other terms as indicated in the county attorney's original draft of the contract.
And I know you meant to say about 5,000 a year, right?
5,000 a year, yes, sir. And this is all in consideration for the long-term and good standing of the Grimes County Fair Association to the Grimes County Fair.
And that would be effective when?
Effective for the.
Today?
Right now, we have January 31 dates, and then we have January 31 with a blank year.
But on theirs, they had May, May 20, 21.
I hate to make them, I mean, there is currently, they're not in an agreement now, this would be burdensome one, I think, I don't know if it would be burdensome, it just seems it could alter some of the things that they already have arranged for this year's fair. I would recommend that this become effective. What else need to work, Kim?
Can we stick with it, can we stick with that January first, or January on a year thing? And just to help y'all understand, we also did just do a wash rack imprisonment to the sum of $12,750. So yes, if this didn't come effective today, we did just complete that project with the, the fair manager's approval. So it's not like we just got free ride, we did.
With, with our financial circle, January 1 is perfect.
Effective January the 1st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second. How much was the wash rack again?
$12,750, and that was approved with Mr. Fox and the fairgrounds manager, Mr. Cruz, for gratitude.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven with verbal modifications to the presented contract that the county attorney has made adequate notes for.
You hope?
I hope, but I've made some notes also. And this has been seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion, commissioners?
I also, you also want to add the provision about the carryover improvements for the full amount of the term, you know, lease term.
I believe so, that, that's, those are my notes, right? And don't, don't, don't be scared, Cory's watching Facebook Live, so even if I didn't get it, Cory got it.
And that's not limited, right? Because I know in the one contract, it was limited to only carryover, I think, two years or something, so that would be unlimited carryover, correct?
That's what I'm hearing.
Nobody has specified, so. With that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fair starts today with the horse show. Aaron Watson on Saturday, and Blue Buck Out put it out the fall on Saturday, so come out and see us.
Mr. Floyd, I didn't get this gentleman's name in the white shirt.
This is Mr. McCullough.
Colton McCullough.
Colton?
C O L T O L.
McCullough, U C C, U L L O C H.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to agenda item number eight, Grimes County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski, considering take action to apply for the Texas Bar Historical Association Grant seat attachment number eight.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So.
I'm going to limit you to an hour and a half, okay?
I won't, I promise. I'm, a couple weeks ago, I was made aware of a grant, and it's called the Texas Bar Historical Foundation Court Records Preservation Grant Program. And I'm just going to kind of read it a little bit. So it says in 2009, the Texas Supreme Court commissioned the Texas Court Records Preservation Task Force to assess the status of Texas's historical court records and develop a plan to address the preservation needs. The task force concluded that the Texas Historical State District and County Court records dating back to the Republic of Texas are among the most important and endangered historical documents in the state. These records contain important information about famous Texans, records the lives of ordinary Texans during historic eras such as the Republic of Texas, the Civil War, and the Great Depression, and may contain the only written records that exist about the ancestors of African Americans whose ancestors were enslaved in the state. Despite their importance, however, many of these records are decaying or being destroyed due to a confluence of events and conditions, including improper storage and handling, the effects of moisture and temperature fluctuations in their storage environment, the ravages of pests, and the acidity of the ink in the paper used to create them. The result of the task force was the establishment of the Court Records Preservation Grant Program with the goal of helping county and district courts preserve their valuable historic court records. So the Texas Bar Historical Foundation, which administers the grant program, was established to engage in and support the research, collection, preservation, and presentation of information, documents, and objects relating to the bench, the bar, and the judicial system within the state of Texas. So for its Court Records Preservation Grant Program, the foundation prefers projects that take preservation and conservation action to prolong the life of historically significant and or valuable records. Additionally, they prefer to fund projects that have secured additional funding such as preservation fees or donation pledges, and projects that have been previously approved by required authorities such as Commissioners Court. Due to the limited availability of funds, the high demand for preservation funding, the State Bar of Texas Historical Foundation is typically able to award grants of between $3,000 and $8,000. The Court Records Preservation Grants are primarily made to the Texas governmental entities and subdivisions. So the grant application itself is pretty straightforward. If you'll notice on the front cover, the application's due date was May 31st. So I have already submitted my application so that we could meet that deadline of May 31st, and I did receive a confirmation that they did receive it. But I wanted to bring this to you so that we could get approval.
Vanessa, did you have until November 30th, too? The application deadlines are May 31st and November 30th.
I'm sorry?
The application deadlines are to May 31st and November 30th.
Okay. So what I did is I included projects that y'all have already approved recently, such as our Commissioners Court Minutes, things of that nature.
So this one didn't have to have a resolution from the Commissioners Court?
No, it did not. But I did include copies of Commissioners Court Minutes where y'all had approved projects and approved my archive plan with my preservation records.
Would this be a separate project if you received the funds, or, or is it to re-?
I'm thinking this would be like to reimburse us for expenses already made since they do prefer this to be projects that have already been approved.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So it'd be more like a reimbursement to the county. And of course, we have no idea how much they would give us. We're hoping they'll give us the max, but, you know, anything.
Which is three to five, three to 8,000?
They're saying three to 8,000, yes, ma'am. And I also submit, they requested copies of bids from vendors, which were the actual bids that we got.
Were the bids, any of the bids more than 8,000?
Yes, sir, because I believe that they were more in the range of about 50,000.
So if the bids are 50,000, has it been quarter proof for the 50,000?
Yes, sir, it was two projects. One was for the marriage record books, and one was for the Commissioners Court records. I think the Commissioners Court records books were about 30 grand. I don't have that numbers in front of me, I'm sorry. But it was well over that amount, so it's not going to cover the whole project, but it'll at least, you know, help us out.
But we've already committed money to be spent. If we receive grant money, this would just be reimbursement to what we spent.
And that was spent on records, archive funds.
Okay.
Now, although we're being reimbursed, are you looking to preserve more records?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And we'll be talking about that during our budget hearings. We've got some more projects already lined up. Yes, ma'am. So that money could be used for future projects, I guess, if, if that money just gets put back into that fund.
Can it go back into the fund?
No, it'll be a grant, it'll be a separate fund, it'll be a grant.
It'll be a separate fund, I saw.
Right, and so the expenses will come out of that grant.
And then it'll be restricted to what it can be used for, I would assume?
If it's a grant fund.
It's restricted.
For preservation.
When the money comes in, it'll go to that fund, and then the expenses, if your project is more, it would be a split coded invoice, which only the expenses that are being reimbursed by the grant will go.
And it did say that you can only submit one grant per organization within a six-month period.
But it, is that to, if November came, didn't that six months from May?
Well, she couldn't apply again, she couldn't apply again this year. She's already applied, and if she's awarded, they were just saying if we didn't meet the deadline by May 31st, if she came to court to get approval, she could have applied in November.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'd like to make the motion that we apply for the Texas Historical Association Grant.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries, thank you, ma'am. Go to agenda item number nine, Grimes County Auditor Jesse Murphy, considering take action to approve TAC risk management pool property renewal with a coverage period beginning July 1, 2021 through July 1, 2022. See attachment number nine.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, how are y'all?
Good.
I'm Lisa McKeg, I'm your Risk Management Consultant with the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool.
And you brought your bodyguard with you?
Absolutely. Joey Chefcheck, he's your Risk Control Consultant. So I thank you for having us this morning to talk about the property renewal. I do want to start with just, the property market continues to be very hard. The market has not recovered since Harvey with the reinsurance, so we're seeing the rates and everything with reinsurance are still not where we need them to be, basically. It's never recovered. With the continuation of the hurricanes, and it's predicted this year it's going to be another bad year, wildfires, you name it, Texas has been hit, especially this year with the winter storm that was not planned by any of us, and hope I never go through that again.
Yes.
So with that, with your property renewal, over the past four years, the Risk Management Pool has paid out 1.9 million in claims. The contribution for those four years was 189, 189,738. Underwriting has made a decision this year to increase your deductible from 1,000 to 5,000. And your mobile equipment deductible remains the same at 1,000, no changes there.
And this is property management?
That property, for your buildings, any mobile equipment that you have.
What is law enforcement animals?
If y'all, do, do y'all have law enforcement animals? Okay, okay, so any of it that something, okay, if something happened to your dogs, dog, whichever way that it is, under the age of eight years old, if they are shot, die, we will reimburse you, you file a claim, and it's reimbursed at 30,000 for that animal. And that's to help get you another animal in, and the training, that's very expensive for those animals. And it would be the same if you had horses. A lot of the counties still have, they're posses, I guess, so same for the horses.
So a flooded facility deductible on that would be 500,000, not to exceed, is that the way I understand?
Uh, no, for you, it's going to be, it would be the 5,000 for the, if you had something that was damaged due to water or peril.
I, I'm like him, I would, I guess I was, when it says not to exceed 500,000 per building.
Right, that's, that's, I don't have it right in front of me, but that's referring to like if you were in a flood zone and were required to carry the national flood insurance program insurance.
Okay, that's if we were in a flood zone, okay.
Or if that building was located in a flood.
We're not located in a flood zone. The new building is not in the flood zone, is it?
Be glad that you're not a tier one county. Those are pretty tough right now.
What are, what tier are we?
Y'all are probably tier three or four, if I were guessing the way that they rate that, because tier one is all coastal.
I think we're, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I would say three or four, probably three.
What is contribution?
The contribution for your renewal this year, I know, I've got it right in front of me, 71,773.
71,000?
The one you gave us, that 71,679? And if the court is interested in looking at higher deductibles, I can certainly go back to underwriting and request those and get those quotes to Jesse. If y'all felt comfortable increasing to a 10,000, I don't know where y'all would be on that. I would think with your size, maybe 5,000 would be the first step and feel comfortable with that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would suggest, yeah.
For your size, yes.
Because we've had damages to one building, whereas it made sense, like the Navasota Annex, where we didn't have it here in Anderson. So for us to go to 10, that would almost have to be a combined overall catastrophic.
And then sometimes if it is a catastrophic situation, immediately you lose that savings with the deductible to put it out.
I think 5,000 would risk enough.
Particularly currently, you said it's 1,000.
Yes, currently 1,000.
So now we're going to five.
And it's increasing 13, I think 12,700 is what it's increasing from last, from this year to next year, which is already in the request.
Right, I had four members in our region, which we consider the southeast region, two of those were my tier one counties. Actually, yeah, three of them were tier one counties, yeah. I had to think, I had to think where we've been this month, or last month.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the TAC risk management pool property renewal, coverage period beginning July 1, 2021 through July, would it be July 1st, or? July 1, 2022?
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Mallett, second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you.
And just something real quick, I wanted to give a reminder, Lisa, it takes your money, I gave it back. This is just a reminder about the safety equipment program. The county was awarded $2,121 for road and bridge and maintenance to purchase safety equipment in the online store. We've been doing that program for the last three years. And then the sheriff's office also got $2,121 that they get to spend in their law enforcement online store.
Can I get you to spell your last name, please?
Sure, S, Z. Sure, S. Z. No, no.
And also your law enforcement, that same amount, that two thousand, uh, to make purchases.
Okay.
Are you the, forgive me, if I don't remember, but you brought the fire expenditure?
I did, yes, sir, I'm your safety guy, so she calls me a Risk Control Consultant, but I'm, I'm Joe the Safety Guy, I do safety training, and it's all included with your coverages that you have, so there's no additional cost to have me come out back into your convention slip trip and fall.
I really need for you to come back with that, because the county attorney beat my time, and he, he wouldn't let me back in on the game.
I, I would be happy to, and I'm meeting with HR tomorrow.
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna discuss your losses and recommend training, and fire safety is one we can definitely have reoccur, I love to have that training.
I'd like a rematch for that.
Yeah, we'll have to come up with a trophy for y'all.
Let me come up, you do the rematch, I'll come up with the trophy.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you all for driving down, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Ten, Roden Bridge Engineer Harry Walker, discuss and take action to begin process of selling FM thirty, ninety property and the Stonemont
This is a continuation of our discussion, um, what did the things of, have explained of it, passed down and delivered, which I should all have a copy of. We have done the survey done on Stonemont property, uh, two parcels, what's called Stonemont Barn property, it's two point eight acres, and then the new piece of property in the community center that required for episode ISB, it is two point nine, six acres. The, after discussions between myself and Kat Lee, um, she has requested that we divide the property to two point eight acres, at the line shown, label proposed divide on what would be Lot Three, um, of that southern portion of the, the Barn property. That would mean that we would be keeping point nine acres of the two point eight acres, and then the, the point nine, six acres already, they were, so we'll have one point nine acres to sell, and essentially one point eight acres that we're gonna keep out of the, the property out there. If this is acceptable to everyone, we'll go ahead, we will need to do a plat to divide that property, um, and I'll move forward with the survey, get that work done. I also have the appraisal underway, uh, for both this property and the, uh, the big key mark on our property later on.
Okay, Mr. Walker, um, looking at the survey, and I think you're probably gonna address that street.
The streets, basically, I've talked to the attorney, um, we would have language in the contract for sale that specifies that, um, those streets are being sold, we're not pertaining any rights, that they're not actually being used as public streets, they would be part of the same, it's essentially the same terms that were included in the deal when we acquired the property.
So it would be essentially the same terms when we acquired the property?
Basically, they, there was a clause in there that said, there was something, bigger county, uh, the lots and the right of way, any adjacent, um, right of way strips or whatever, um, and that they will not, uh, they will, they will not as public, represented as public streets.
So...
Sure, I, um, not sure what the question is, Commissioner, but we can, we can make it work however, you all know that around the turn of the century, many of the, uh, small towns in the county were platted by the railroad, and I don't know whether that was the case here or not, but once the property was dedicated to the public, if the county didn't accept it, you still have the issue that someone buys property subject to that issue, and, um, because you can adversely possess against the governmental entity, then there remains the issue of whether those, uh, rights are still in the government, even though the government may not have accepted, uh, those roads, uh, either via plat or by maintenance. So all to say, we can put in the deed that, uh, the property is as is, you know, within all things that are shown in the survey, if there were to be an issue from the title company, let's say the buyer goes to get title insurance, and the title company says, wait a second, we won't insure these public roads without a vacation, then certainly the matter could come before the court, so the courts would vacate those roads. That would be an issue for the buyer, so, uh, we don't necessarily need to tilt it a bunch of windmills, so I, you all can choose how to handle that, but, um, I think that would come up later if the buyer was concerned.
Okay, that, that was my concern, so none of the, uh, property from the school district, it does, it, it doesn't fall with, within that street, right, the North Fourth Street?
Correct, the, the description of the property that required from the school district does not include, um, any portion of North Third Street or the alleyway, I don't know, on the west side of that track, there's actually an alleyway there, um, between the community center and the dump site.
And the Waller Avenue, do we have to do, deal with that?
Fourth Street and, and Waller Avenue, um, of course, the portion we're keeping won't matter, but I think the safest thing to do in the long run, probably go ahead and do the vacation of those streets, um, the portion that we're selling, that we just discussed. Basically, the streets were shown on the original plat of the town, um, and nobody has ever perfected any of the streets, they were never developed to the streets, um, so they're, they're kind of in limbo at this stage, I think. I would just assume and see, we do the vacation, and clean up that issue once and for all.
If, if we vacate, though, um, that means that landowners on either side of the center line would, would it go either way, or is that gonna be included in the property we have?
I would just vacate the portion within that, um, that one point nine acres that we're proposing to sell.
Okay, so vacate within?
Yeah, in conjunction with that transaction.
Well, the, I, I, right now, I wasn't addressing the portion we were gonna sell, I was addressing the Waller Street, the portion we're keeping.
Nobody's challenged it, we've had that for years and years, um, nobody's attempted to use that, it was, again, a portion of the Waller Avenue was included in the purchase, um, of Stonemont Barn property originally. As you can see, there wasn't even the entire right of way, those were eighty-foot right of ways.
Mm-hmm, I see.
There's, I don't know, fifty feet or so, um, that was purchased by the county, you know, again, nobody has attempted to assert a claim that that's a right of way, I think if that comes up, we can deal with that later, um, just, as far as the sale of the property, I think it'd be prudent to clean up the issue with Fourth Street and the portion of Waller Avenue that's within the property, so, and I would also point out that the point nine acres, where the, the, the dump site is now, and the additional property that we keep there, does not actually have access except across the community center property and that alleyway.
Mm-hmm.
So we may turn around, put the shoe on the other foot, and want to see North Third Street developed into a road, and recognize that as a public right of way.
Isn't that the flood, isn't that the ditch?
Uh, there's a ditch along there, but it's a bit part of that, uh, foot and track to the south of, of the community center property.
So that would provide another entryway for...
If, if for somewhere in the future, county decided to dispose of the community center property, you could either maintain an access easement to the point nine acres, or you go ahead and establish a claim to North Third Street as a public entity, I don't know if we'd quite actually that way, but...
Okay, I, I got you.
It's, again, it's kind of a mess because of the fact that somebody drew a survey, might claim that said these are streets, and nobody ever developed them as streets, so they're kind of in no man's land.
Yeah, I could see us trying to clean up the remaining one point nine acres, just to be clear.
All right, if, if I were the one, the portion of purchasing the point nine acre, I would want to see that location in place.
Correct.
Just like the title insurance, all that stuff, great, but rather have the tax discount
What about that manufactured home that's listed on here, there's been some discussion about that, isn't that where the ambulance is?
Uh, yes, um, I did have, um, he asked about the manufactured home that was on here, I did, um, get some bids on moving it, um, just heard back from one yesterday, I hadn't heard back from the other, um, but I did receive a bid, and, and this particular bid would include the, um, set up and take down, take down and set up, but the carport would need to be removed, which is basically, I guess, just cutting it down to the ground and just removing it. Um, the, um, the bid that I received, the porch would need to come off, and to untie the building, and then to move it to the location that you want it to go to, uh, they bid forty-five hundred on that.
Could we use part of those proceeds if we chose to move that, from the sale to pay, pay for the move?
I think that's what's been proposed.
That was my original proposal, but because the trailer there takes up so much of the frontage of that property, I felt like it was justifiable, proceeds of the sale, how pay for moving the trailer, um, and that also that we would pay for the, the surveys and appraisals and such, how the proceeds of the sale, and any improvements, um, you know, for the environmental department, anything they want to do with the property will come out of their, you know, their funds, that would be taken out of the...
Also, um, as far as the awning goes, um, if we're moving, we, we talked about moving it over to the south of the community center, where it says Grimes County, Texas, document three one five two one, two five one, that's about the area we were talking about relocating it to, is that correct, Kat? And if we relocate it there, that bid that I just gave you did not include, uh, that's to set it back up over there, but I don't know if it includes, uh, uh, reattaching the porch, I would need to get some clarity on that, but it does not include the awning. And the awning, uh, when talking with CHI St. Joseph, uh, they, they basically only had about two inches clearance, because the ambulance have gotten larger over the years, so whatever we built would need to be taller than what we currently have, I don't know if that could be taken apart and, and reconfigured, uh, that would be something we could, um, toss around, uh, as far as the height, that's where I'm going with that. But also, the same people, I looked at the community center, and, um, we've had a demolition crew look at the community center, and I've also had a, a moving crew look at it, uh, to see if it was something that someone might be interested in if we put it up for auction. So, um, this, the, the, um, moving, uh, house movers said that it had no savage value for them, but, um, if someone wanted it moved, if you went out for auction and somebody wanted it moved, the building would have to have the top cut out, uh, the tin removed, um, bracing done, and that, uh, to move it within a twenty-mile radius, they're looking at probably about twenty dollars per square foot, which is anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-five thousand dollars. The building is thirty by forty, so I don't know, we got a bid for demolition, I think it was eleven thousand, isn't that what I sent you? Uh, about eleven thousand dollars to demolish. That is a place that we were talking about putting an ambulance, what, uh, what do you, a helicopter pad?
Helicopter pad.
A helicopter pad. Currently, I think we still have time to decide something on that, because it's not gonna be in the way of what we're trying to do, right?
Correct.
Right, I, yeah, I, as far as I'm concerned, the community center can, can stay there as long as need be, decide what to do, whether you want to demo it or try to sell it or whatever, can, what I need to proceed with right now is a decision on where we're dividing the property, I can go ahead and get the plat going, um, get the appraisal finalized, um, while some of these other issues about the improvements, um, you know, get worked out. I, I would like, I think it's a good move to see that community center go away, or move away, if someone wants to buy it, great, one thing.
Or somebody want to burn it down?
I've talked to Chief Vickers out of Whitehall to take a look at it, and they can do three training exercises and burn it down.
But it would have to, it has to go through a process of being declared, uh, unsalvageable? There is a statute that addresses that, uh, I think I sent you that, too.
You did. And your bid, you know, is referenced to that, that is not salvageable material, so...
So I don't know, we'd have to probably get a, uh, to recognize that it's not salvageable.
Our county attorney will help us.
Yes, thank you.
And been salvageable for a long time.
Do you need a motion or just guidance as to where's the right layout, and whatever comes through, is it actual? Well, we said, discuss and take action, so I'd like a motion that gives him permission to go ahead and get the property surveyed as it's indicated on here, and move forward on the sell process, sale process.
There are a few.
If there are no... Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Ten by Commissioner Malat, second by Commissioner Dobianski, is there further discussion at this time?
If I might do a...
Yes, sir.
The, on the other part of the property, the, the ten ninety-three prop...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine is on there, flash back. Thirty-ninety property, um, I would recommend we just leave that building, sell it with the property, um, I am still waiting to hear back from the city in Navasota, they are investigating the alleyway that divides those two parcels, uh, when I do hear back from them, I wonder if the alleyway has to remain or to be abandoned.
Did anybody get the lock off and check on the Christmas decorations?
The Christmas decorations are all gone.
Well...
I don't know if we got the lock off and, and, but there's nothing of any value in that building.
Okay.
And we didn't check it out.
Okay.
It could have been that it came up once before for auction, that might have been done during that time.
Yeah, I, I was surprised, because I understood there were still things in there, and we weren't in there recently, and it's all gone.
So Commissioner Malat, is there any adjustment to your agenda, or in your motion?
Um, I think you're still pursuing the, the thirty-ninety, so I don't, there's really no need for motion.
I think, I think everybody's agreed, we're gonna sell that entire property, whether two separate parcels or incorporate the alleyway, we'll go ahead and sell that, um, I don't think there's any decision to be made, so we'll just wait and see, and go through their process. And, and similar to this, I think, um, the proceeds from the sale, and by Roden Bridge, you know, we paid the expenses out there.
To be clear, I, I'm, I'm not following, uh, are we approving thirty-ninety at this time, or, or is that, we're, we're waiting?
No, we're waiting for further information on that.
I think we've already, we've already approved.
We're approving for the sale, Harry's just trying to determine what else is gonna go with the sale.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think y'all actually previously approved the sale.
Yeah, but we don't know if it includes alleyway or...
We don't know that, whatever includes.
So it says to, the action is to begin process of selling, so that's getting your appraisals and the plaits done for at least Stonemont?
No, I want to move forward with both.
Right.
I, I don't think there's any reason to wait, um, thirty-nine, we just have to go through the, the, the survey finalized, yeah, we'll do that. the, the, the survey finalized, you know, and then go out. I don't think we need to bring that back for a reason.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number eleven, consider and take action to authorize Roden Bridge to go out for bids on the following. One, reconstruction of a portion of County Road three-oh-two. Two, reconstruction of a portion of County Road two-one-five CITF. What does CITF stand for?
County Transportation Infrastructure Fund.
County Infrastructure Transportation Fund. Right, okay.
It's, it's CTIF, not CITF. It's type on there.
C-T-I. It sounds good either way. I just didn't know.
It's, it's Techstock Grant that helps pay for, um, the oil field roads to do repairs to damages caused by the oil industry.
Okay. Purchase of cold mixed asphalt materials, number three.
On that two-fifteen project, is that on the east side or the west side?
On the, beyond the east side. It's the section coming from seventeen-seventy-four going up into the road two-fifteen. That section, that is asphalt, but it's in bad shape and it's got it as well down that road that, uh, the oil field traffic uses.
Was this one of the roads that was asked to be striped?
No, no. Three-oh-two.
Three-oh-two, that was in, in the request from Mr. Drack. On three-oh-two, we had planned to do, do hot mix on a portion of three-oh-two this year. Uh, be the portion coming from three-sixty-two, um, going east. Um, depending on how the bids come in, um, either up to that first bridge or up to the first corner. Um, yeah, the striping in there could be included in that project, depending on. There are some issues of trying to stripe the twenty-foot wide street. It's not, it's not really desirable, but, um, if we're doing a project out there, we could do that portion of it at least.
Okay.
Is there further discussion?
I'm hoping they would take action to authorize Roden Bridge to go out for bids on the following. Reconstruction of a portion of three-oh-two, reconstruction of portion two-fifteen, purchase of the cold mixed asphalt material.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eleven by Commissioner Dobianski, second by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion at this time? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number twelve, consideration of possible approval of the renewal of a special road use indemnity agreement for Blue Jay Solar Project. See our attachment number twelve. Mr. Walker.
The, uh, the special road use indemnity agreements are limited to a ninety-day term by the legislature. Uh, this time for the purchase of Blue Jay Solar's, uh, blue use permit. Uh, we have some representatives of, of Blue Jay Solar here today. Um, I felt like because of, um, some of the issues and, and concerns over the project, you might like to have them come in and talk to you. Uh, maybe you can give another date on the project at the same time. Any questions?
Yeah. Okay. Um, I've, I've got a little concern. I know there's some citizens that have, have gotten in touch with me about road conditions, particularly on one-sixty-two. Uh, what kind of plans y'all have to, to get those, um, that roadway up and trap more traffic?
Do you want to be comfortable?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, good morning. My name's Pat Ringler. I'm with IEA Constructors. We're the general contractor on the project. Uh, this is Morris Schiavoni, uh, representing the project owner in Albreth Power. Uh, we're, it's in my scope to maintain the condition of the, the site roads out there. So, uh, we've basically been grading and rolling the roads. Um, you know, we have, uh, truck delivery traffic that's bringing materials to the project site. So of course with the rain, um, you know, that results in some washboarding and some holes. So, um, we're performing daily maintenance. Uh, there was one area that was just on the west side of the intersection of one-sixty-two and one-sixty-four where it was low. There was water ponding into the road. We actually hauled in aggregate and some Techstock base material and built that section up here a couple weeks, uh, two weeks ago. We can have to, to make improvement, but for the most part, it's, it's grooming, it's grading, it's rolling, that type of thing.
Well, no doubt we've had our fair share of rain up there and everywhere else around the county, but. Mr. Walker, have you kind of noticed that it's been maintained to your satisfaction as well or?
They have, they have made some efforts. Uh, I can't say that they've been getting the county on the spot to get anything done on the best of them. They're.
Part of it potentially weather related or just?
Yeah, the, the weather, the amount of rain we've had has certainly been an issue. Uh, I would like to see them, you know, take, take greater efforts to try and get the water off the road and keep the bonding off the road. Uh, we've met with them several times and that's the new thing. Some of which has just been done.
And these are ninety days, is that right?
Ninety days.
Are you comfortable with the ninety day or is it, uh, should we shorten it and make sure things are taken care of or, or can we shorten it?
What's your bid?
What would your recommendation be?
Um, what I would suggest maybe is we take it under advisement. If the maintenance isn't being candid to, we bring it back in less than ninety days. We consult on that as you see the project come as much as I do. Um, you know, things.
There's a lot of trucks going in there.
A lot of trucks going in there. We've had some issues with the routing. Uh, they're taking some steps to, to try to correct that. Uh, and, and, yeah, they are trying, but I think there's more to be done. What I would suggest is that let's see how it goes for next month or so and then if, um, things aren't looking better, we'll bring it back.
And I guess we can always, if we commit to ninety days, we would still come back and, and is there stipulation there to make sure it makes go on the way it needs to be going?
Do you think there's a bit of that stipulation in the renewal motion?
Well, we just wanted to push it for a month and then come back and read this as well.
Either one.
Okay. All right. Uh, I move to approve the renewal of the special road use indemnity, indemnity agreement for, uh, thirty days for the Blue, uh, Blue Jay Solar Project.
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number twelve by Commissioner Malat, second by Commissioner Dobianski with the modification, do a thirty-day approval versus ninety day. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Harry, can I get the gentleman's names again, please?
Pardon?
Can I get the gentleman's names again?
Yes, ma'am.
Pat Ringler, that's R-I-M-G-L-E-R. Okay.
And you, sir? Uh, C-H-I-E?
C, S-C-H-I-A-V-O.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's Italian, like me.
Okay, I think that clears you, Mr. Walker.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is. Presentation of Roden Bridge report?
A couple of things to note. Um, we were hoping to start our end of all contracts this week. We pushed on with because of the weather and the soft conditions. We don't want to make a mess out of things. Hopefully we'll be able to start next week, but the weather management is not working. Uh, also I'd like to note, I received a permit approval from Techstock yesterday for the extension of Pine Brook Drive down to State Highway two-forty-nine.
Great.
Uh, we still have the real estate transaction to finalize. I hope we are moving in the right direction.
Can you say that again? Approval of what?
The extension of Pine Brook Drive to tie into State Highway two-forty-nine. Now, we have, we have requested two other roads to be tied into two-forty-nine also that they're still reviewing. Uh, but Pine Brook one, uh, has been approved at this point.
And who approved that?
Uh, the correspondence I got came from Lonnie Becker at Techstock.
Okay, Techstock's the one that has to make that approval for the connection?
Yes. Now, we, we are still in the process of acquiring the necessary roadway and that will probably the rest of the summer, uh, until approved. But, yeah, we couldn't justify acquiring the roadway until we can text out, presumably just make the connection.
Sure. Makes sense.
Going through the process. Um, other than that, we are, again, trying to do what we can with the wet conditions. Um, starting to look like it's going to shore us down and getting the program going in the summer. Uh, just because we haven't been able to get the, the base for Gerald down and set up, it gets, hopefully we'll get Gerald down and, uh, catch up.
Good job. Got a couple of things. I'd ask that you look into, if you were here doing public comments, Mr. Drack made a request about striping the three-oh-four and three-oh-two and presented a petition of people that apparently live out in the area that have concerns about that. If you wouldn't mind looking into the feasibility of striping those two roads in the future.
I could look into it and report back in a future meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you much. Agenda item thirteen, discuss and take action to approve the application for the twenty-twenty-one American Rescue Plan, AKA Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Plan, SL-FRF. This was, this is, uh, part of that one-point-nine trillion dollar plan that Congress has approved. They sent out the information for us to register for that with the assistance of the county auditor. Uh, they got my mug shot, social security number, driver's license and everything else. And what we wanted to, so we've made that first pitch, but we wanted to rank it before court to get the approval so that then we can authorize the funding. Jesse, comments?
For the award terms and conditions, um, I didn't have it as an attachment in my packet. We, for the commissioners' court, the terms and conditions, what you're.
Okay.
I don't know if you, we printed it out in your office, so you can see it as an attachment. Sorry.
And, and this is part of sixty-five billion that went directly to counties and you had to make application?
You had to make application if you wanted to have the distribution and it's going to be a, a two-part distribution. We're supposed to have the first two-point-eight million as we speak and then the second, uh, two-point-eight bil- billion, million. I wish it was a billion. Two-point-eight million because Grimes County has been allocated five-point-six million in this American Recoveries Act. So we had to apply, uh, but we have till twenty, they've extended the expenditure to twenty-twenty-six, the end of twenty-twenty-six, to spend the funds. But we'll have to get all of our requests for spending approved through, uh, the appropriate authorities just to make sure that when we spend it, we are going to get reimbursed for it. We don't want to be left out there on the hook.
And, and you were talking about the period of performance. Uh, the period for performance for this war, award ends December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Eligible cost incurred during that period, they're going to look at what's incurred between March third of twenty-twenty-one to the end of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So it has to be incurred already and then, um, uh, the, the performance portion is until twenty-six.
Yes, and we'll have a future budget workshop meeting, or not budget workshop, we'll have future meetings on it as far as different projects. And I know we had discussed, um, the fiber and, um, but kind of waiting still on more guidance.
Right.
Yes, the, we received some guidance, but it's, it's sketchy.
Yeah, it's very minimal. And if it's anything like the other one, they'll, um, they can come back and change it.
So this, this basically what you're, uh, bringing before commissions court is you're asking for this court to approve you to be the authorized representative to make applications and be the, be the person that's putting your signature on these federal dollars that holds us all accountable.
And I'm willing to give that responsibility to you, Commissioner, if so motioned.
No. No, you can have it, but I just wanted to make sure, uh, we understood this is just the process to get the, to get the funds.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we don't do this, then.
They don't come automatically. If, if there are no further questions, then I would like to make the motion that we approve the application for the twenty-twenty-one American Rescue Plan, AKA Corona Fire State and Local Physical Recovery Funds.
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number thirteen by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski.
Can I add that?
Yes.
With the judge's signatory. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because this, you're, you're the person.
That is correct. I'm the one that ID'd to, uh, to the IRS.
Yes.
With the county judge as signatory. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I really ought to abstain, but I'm with it.
Don't abstain.
Well, agenda item fourteen, discuss and take action to allow elected officials and department heads to use budgeted salary dollars for overtime pay with the consideration that the money must be available within their budget and does not exceed their current budgeted amount for salaries, including overtime pay. Uh, I've asked Ms. Coleman to be here in support of the comments that I'm going to make, but the way it's been presented to me by an elected official is that I have a vacancy in my office. It's been approved, it's an approved vacancy. I have salaries left over from that because the vacancy has not been filled. I have extra dollars that I need to spend or I want to spend on overtime and I don't know specifically, but I do believe a, a portion of that is getting that office to make ready for the move to the new facility. So the discussion is, is it allowable for that elected official or that department head or a elected official or department head who has budgeted, approved salary money that has been, has not been used, can they indeed use it for overtime? From what I read in the policy, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that. Jesse, do you have an issue or a concern?
Normally if a department requests those type, we would prepare a line item transfer and we would bring it before commissioners' court because it does involve salaries. And you're not, you're, the policy states that you cannot move monies from vacant positions to another position. This isn't, what they're trying to do is utilize that money in preparation for the move and move it to overtime. I, if commissioner's court approves it, I don't see anything in, like where it would be breaking policy.
But it would be your preference to have any elected official that needs to do this, that they submit it before court as a line item transfer and we approve. that they submit it before court as a line item transfer and we approve it?
So, they contact our office, and what we would have to do is annualize out for the remaining of the year, um, and to see how much would be available.
Very good, all right.
Judge, real quick, so it's not a current vacant position, it was a position that was vacant for several months.
Okay, and they filled it, but they do have.
And they filled it, but they have extra money in that salary line.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, so it's not a.
Does that change your request, requirement?
No, it's, I understood it to be that way.
Okay.
But it will go back, um, because it is a filled position, no matter what, at the beginning of the budget year, their overtime goes back to.
Okay.
Less commissioner's court approves.
You have, you know the specific department on this? Would you get with them?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I wonder if it needs to be, I mean, if we approve this, that anybody could do it without coming to commissioners' court, I wonder if we just need to do it on a case-by-case basis?
It, it's a line item, yeah, I, yes. I would prefer.
Versus, versus doing any action here, I would present that as a case-by-case basis to make sure.
Yes, so you're fully aware of what, who's doing it.
Is that a consensus? We'll take no action on 14 with the understanding that it'll be a line item transfer request by any elected official, uh, to have that done, and we approve it in that process.
Okay, you started this by saying that it's not in our policy, so does this need to be?
Anything against our policy.
It doesn't, yes.
It doesn't go against the policy.
It doesn't go against it, okay.
Right.
All right, so nothing needs to happen with the policy, that's where I was going to.
No, it was a matter of, did it break policy, and it, it doesn't currently break the policy.
Okay, because that's what, it's all, it's going to be all brought to commissioners' court, once it goes to your office, then it comes.
It will, we do the numbers, we run the numbers, and then it becomes a commissioners' court Agenda Item.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Uh, Agenda Item Number 15, uh, I have had discussion with the county auditor, and I'm going to request that we table this, uh, so that she and I and others can have a little further discussion before we bring it back to the court, so we'll take no action if that's acceptable, commissioners? We'll go to Agenda Item Number, is that okay with you, Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Still go, uh, go to Agenda Item Number 16, Consider and Take Action Regarding the Burn Ban or Authorizing County Judge as Signatory. Uh, I'm going to suggest no action. Is there agreement on that? Agenda Item 17, Receive Any Updates on the Strategic Plan? Nothing to re, go ahead.
I was just going to report, I did receive a, uh, email from CHI, Billy Rice, that all of the new, um, ventilators that they have, uh, purchased, uh, have now been put on all the trucks, and they're training the operation of them. During COVID, they found that the ventilators were not as adequate as they needed them to be, so they, uh, went out for federal dollars or received allocated money to buy, uh, these units that ran about 20 to 25,000 apiece, so that's good news for our citizens.
Anything else? With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 18, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18 by Commissioner Dobianski, second by Commissioner Malat. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, we have a workshop to.